It's so good to see everyone. We are so glad you're here. Look at these awesome students coming in. We are so glad they're here. At this time, I will reconvene into open session this meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees for October 6, 2022, beginning at 6:30. Members of the public may access this meeting via AISD website at www.aisd.net. One or more trustees may participate in this meeting via video conference call. A quorum of the Board of Trustees will be physically present at the Administration Building. Thank you all for joining us tonight. Our board meetings are open to the public, and we welcome everyone, and thank you for participating in public education. While our meetings are open to the public, this is a meeting, and we have business to conduct. Disruptions will not be permitted. Anyone who disrupts the meeting or speakers when others are speaking may be asked to leave or escorted out by security. We welcome civic input, but we insist that we remain respectful and civil. Thank you for your cooperation. We will start our meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join Ms. McMurro in leading us in the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one nation, indivisible.
Thank you. Please be seated. Please silence all cell phones and electronic devices to avoid disruptions for those around you, and if you would please join me in a moment of silence. Before we begin, I want to draw your attention to those of us that are wearing pink in honor of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. On a personal note, as I look back on the past year, I am especially grateful for the research being done and all the incredible donors and all the incredible doctors and nurses that provide comfort and care to all their patients. And we have incredible doctors and nurses right here in Arlington, and I'm very grateful for them. Thank you for that indulgence. We will now move to our opening ceremony. Ms. Foster?
Yes, indeed. Greetings, everyone. We have a special group. They're being flagged in as we speak. President Fowler, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos, our huge group of folks that are with us tonight, everyone watching online, we do have a fantastic presentation tonight. We have a wonderful group. This is the Gunn Junior High and Fine Arts and Dual Language Academy dancers. The dancers are performing this evening, and they range from 6th to 8th grade. So some of these kids are the neighborhood kids that are zoned to Gunn Junior High, and some are in the cohort from the Corey and Jones Academies. They're under the direction of Ms. D. Evans tonight. To honor Hispanic Heritage Month, they express these lyrics through dance. Quote, "Everything is forgotten while dancing. Enjoy your life while living it. Don't let it take away your joy. Tomorrow is another day." Gunn dancers are performing to Amy Núviola's song entitled "Bella Do Toto Se Oliva Vida." Did I get close, y'all? We'll go with it. All right. Take it away, Gunn dancers.
(Music) 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 (Applause)
That was absolutely incredible. Thank you, ladies, so much. So much talent.
Okay, board, it's our turn.
And Mr. Hibbs, isn't that interesting? That was the same outfit I saw you in last weekend.
(Laughter)
Kidding, Mr. Hibbs. We are now ready for our October 2022 Student of the Month. Dr. Bowlin?
Gotta get the podium.
Oh, gotta get the podium. I think it's in pain. Now, let's try this again. It's now time for October 2022 Student of the Month, and we have Arlington College and Career High School here, and Principal Dr. Ben Bowlin, thank you.
Good evening, President Fowler, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos. Thank you for this opportunity to recognize one of the outstanding students from our campus. It is my pleasure to introduce the Student of the Month from Arlington College and Career High School, Ms. Karen Alvarez. Karen is currently a senior and a member of the inaugural class of 2023 at ACCHS. She is a product of AISD and previously attended Atherton Elementary and Workman Junior High. She wanted to attend ACCHS because she realized the opportunity this school could provide for her future. Karen has accomplished a great deal in just over three years at ACCHS. She has already acquired 55 college credit hours and has a college GPA of 3.9. This December, she will earn her college associate's degree before earning her high school diploma, which will happen next June. Both of these accomplishments will be a first for her family. Her hard work has helped her to become a member of the Tarrant County College Deans List, the Phi Theta Kappa Honor Society, and the Sigma Kappa Delta English Honor Society. Since Karen has also taken advantage of all opportunities to accelerate her learning, she is currently enrolled at UTA, taking extra college courses as a part of the inaugural as being an inaugural participant in our Titan Scholars Program. Next year, Karen wants to attend a four-year university to pursue a career in communications or public health. Her top university choices include UTA, TCU, and Baylor, but as she wisely stated, she would like to go to the school that offers her the most scholarship dollars so she won't have any debt after graduation. Out of all the outstanding students at ACCHS, the staff selected Karen for this honor, and here are a few things they had to say about her. Karen has amazing communication skills and a strong work ethic. She always wants to perform well and is willing to help out other help out her peers so they can do the same. Her positive spirit and determination are inspiring. She has a great attitude every day and does not let setbacks deter her from her goals. We are very proud of Karen and can't wait to see what she will achieve in the future. Congratulations, Karen.
Good evening. I first want to thank Dr. Cavassos and the members of the school board for this incredible recognition. I am beyond honored and thankful for this. Some people that are here with me today are my parents, who are always there for me and everything that I need. They're always there to support me. They've given me wisdom. They've taught me hard work and determination, and I can never think them enough for everything they've done for me. I also want to thank Dr. Cavassos, Mrs. Cunningham, Mrs. Franks, Officer Gallegos, Mr. Cole, and every single faculty and staff member for being here today and for the positive words and affirmations and endless amount of support and opportunities that they have given me during my time at ACCHS, as well as the amazing memories I've made with the people that I've met there and with them. I never thought that someday I would be here or that I would be receiving something like this, and I'm so thankful for it. I'm not sure what the future has in store for me. Only God knows, but what I do know is that this is just the beginning of the rest of my life. Thank you.
Karen, we are so very proud of you and in awe of you. Did I understand correctly that you have already 50 hours of college credit?
Yes.
That is 50 hours. Isn't that incredible? And that you're part of the Honor Society at TCC and the English Honor Society?
Yes.
As an English professor, that does my heart good. I love that. I love that.
Thank you.
We are so proud of you. Your future is very bright, and we're proud that you're an AISD student. May we come down and get our picture made with you?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Karen, it is a pleasure to present you with a pin that we all wear. You don't have to wear it if you don't want to, but you will have it to keep. We wear them to all the meetings and when we're out in the public, and we wanted to share that with you because it will represent AISD, and you represent AISD so well.
Thank you so much.
Karen, congratulations, and you represent our district exceptionally well. You're a model for our students. You're a role model for many, many students. We want to give you this so you can remember this this night as well, and Karen, I know you're going to do very well, and I congratulate you and your family for your accomplishment. Congratulations.
(Applause)
also known as SLAB, and Dr. Jarco will be announcing them.
Thank you, Board President Fowler, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos. It's my honor and pleasure tonight to go ahead and to continue this theme of introducing our student talent in Arlington ISD by introducing our 2022-23 Student Leadership Advisory Board. I have the honor of working with this distinguished group of young men and women. The group is made up of our junior class presidents at each of our six traditional high schools and our two early college high schools as well. In addition to that, we also have a senior class president who served with us last year as a junior and has continued that role this year. The purpose of the group of student leaders is to really represent Arlington ISD students' voice, to provide feedback, and to ensure that we give feedback basically to help us support our work in Arlington ISD. SLAB members assist in building relationships, not only with each other, but with students at their campuses, with their principals, with members of the board, to make sure that we can understand their voice and their understanding of the critical issues across our district. With these young men and women, they have no official voting right, but their advisory role and their voice is super important to the work that we do in Arlington. This group is led by a student who served, as I mentioned, in SLAB last year. He's going to actually introduce all of our members this year. He's in for our junior class group. So the SLAB president for 2022-23 is going to be Osoro Noma Egbenoma. He's going to talk very briefly about his experience, how it helped him last year, and he's going to introduce our board member or our SLAB members from this school year. So with that being said, I'm going to go and turn it over to Osoro Noma real quick.
Good evening. My name is Osoro Noma, like Dr. Jarco said, and I thank him for the opportunity for allowing me to lead these wonderful SLAB members. Good evening to you guys. It was a pleasure working with you guys last year, and it really had an impact on me. So I have a couple of words here, like you said, brief. So my experience in SLAB last year impacted my leadership skills and willingness to lead, and my principal, Mr. Jeffrey Krieger, he can vouch for me on that. But seeing and being alongside these wonderful board members who are key leaders in our district and our own community allowed me to learn and take what they do in a larger sample and take it into a smaller sample at my school and my community as well, which I'm thankful for. It also has been a great resume and application booster as I applied for scholarships and schools like that. So not a lot of people can say they have worked with their district. And so once again, thank you, guys. And now I will introduce our new members for the 2022-2023 school year. So first, we have Abel Hernandez from Arlington Collegiate High School. Next, we have Skylar Evans from Arlington College and Career High School. Next, we have Monet Kisa from Arlington High School. Next, we have Joanne Shaw from Bowie High School. Then we have Emilio Berlanga from Lamar High School. We have Joel Regina from Martin High School. And finally, we have Joanna Silva from Sam Houston High School. Thank you.
And they're going to stay standing for just a second because I'm going to go ahead and pair up board members and let them know who each student is working with in terms of the board. So Abel's working with Justin Chapa. Skylar Evans is going to be working with Sarah McMurro. So Skylar, if you can take a step forward real quick. Thank you. Monet is going to be working with Dr. Aaron Reich. Joanne will be working with David Wilbanks. Emiliano is going to be working with John Hibbs.
There we go.
There we go. Joel Regina is going to be working with Keisha Mays. Joanna Silva will be working with Sarah McMurro. And we also have one additional SLAB member we're going to introduce real quick from Seguin High School, Lily Perez. She's going to be working with Justin Chapa as well. She had priorities tonight, like an orchestra concert, so she decided that was more important tonight, and rightfully so. Thank you. You can all have a seat, and again, we'll give our group one more round of applause.
Thank you, Dr. Jarco, and thank you to our SLAB students. You know, it's good to hear from them. They're very honest with us. They tell us the truth, and they let us know that the issues, the good and the bad, that are going on in the high schools, and we appreciate them so much. They're the cream of the crop, and we appreciate them and look forward to working with them this year. Thank you all for being here. Next on the agenda will be our Community Engaged for Excellence Award of Appreciation. Mr. Peralas.
Good evening, President Fowler, Dr. Cavassos, members of the board. It's always a joy to be able to come and formally say thank you to our community that support our students and teachers every day and staff, and to be able to say thank in a formal way to an organization that has gone above and beyond to give extra support to AISD. Now, they are a kind of a new kid on the block, but they're part of a family of an organization that we know very well, so let's get to know them. The Texas Trust Gives Foundation is a charitable arm of the Texas Trust Credit Union. Championing a mission to invest in their communities to build brighter financial futures, the foundation provides scholarships to local high school students. They also award charitable grants and organize volunteer efforts for community events through their community unity team. As a new partner of AISD, the Texas Trust Gives Foundation has supported the distribution of two $10,000 college scholarships to AISD students. The first is the AICD LaManda Dawn Higginbottom Education Scholarship awarded to a high school senior that will major in education. Very important for us. The second is the AICD Lou Neighbors Engineering Scholarship awarded to a senior attending college and majoring in engineering. This past summer, TTGF awarded a $10,000 grant to Arlington ISD in support of our AISD back-to-school kickoff, which was great. Thank you. In terms of connecting students with school supplies, this translates to connecting nearly 1,000 students with backpacks full of supplies so that they could be ready for the school year. In addition, Texas Trust Gives Foundation supported the kickoff by volunteering at the event as well. And finally, this past school year, the TTGF donated an additional $5,500 to AISD to support school district and campus initiatives. These are some of the highlights of the varying support that TTGF has provided in a very short amount of time. I think they established about three years ago, but with new great leadership a little over a year ago, they've just come in and made a great impact in a very quick amount of time. So thank you so much to them. At this time, I would like to recognize their executive director, Washima Huck, who will be accepting for the foundation.
Hello. It's always amazing to be near anyone who works for or is affiliated with Arlington ISD. I am a proud product of the city. I have lived here all my life, and I it's just an honor to be able to give back in so many ways through scholarships, grants, and volunteer work and give back to our very own city. So we are proud to, you know, be headquartered in Arlington, Texas. We gave $65,000 to nine school districts. $10,000 went to AISD, so y'all got a pretty good portion. And I got to volunteer at the event at the AT&amp;T Stadium this summer, and it was just rewarding to see the students who have the need for those essential backpacks and school supplies receive that and start the school year off on the right note. So we hope to continue to do more and partner through the foundation. We are a new kid on the block. It's our first ever award we're receiving, having been established for about nine months officially. So thank you so much for this recognition, and again, we hope to do more. Thank you. And I have my board chair, Mr. Larry Skinner, joining me today for the photo.
We appreciate Texas Trust so much and all that you have done for the district. Hang on right there. And right there, right there. And Washima, I know you're too modest to tell, but you were just awarded from the Arlington Chamber of Commerce, 40 under 40, for 40 outstanding members that are under the age of 40, and you were one of the recipients. So we appreciate you very much. May we come down and get that picture? And it's so amazing that you've just really established Texas Trust in the last nine months, and you've done so much for all the neighboring districts as well as AISD, and we appreciate it so very much. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, so congratulations on receiving your first award. We sincerely appreciate it. Your impact has been very significant in our school district. We expect that to continue. Anyway, that's just a little hint. You know that. You know me very well. But no, sincerely, thank you so much. We appreciate you.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Keep up the good work.
Now, we come to our open forum for agenda items. As stated on the posted agenda, members of the public who desire to address the board regarding an item on the agenda are required to register at www.aisd.net. Board meeting speaker requests no later than 3:00 p.m. the day of the board meeting. Ms. Benjamin, do we have anyone registered?
No, ma'am, we do not. Thank you, Ms. Benjamin.
Next, we will consider administrative ratifications and appointments. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler, and this evening, I'd like to recommend that the board ratify the appointment of the individuals discussed in closed session for the following positions. Principal for Bowie High School, Assistant Principal for Arlington Collegiate High School, Assistant Principal for Bowie High School, PTEC Assistant Principal for Seguin High School, Assistant Principal for Carter Junior High, Assistant Principal for Butler Elementary, and Assistant Principal for Hale Elementary.
Do I have a motion to approve the administrative ratifications that's discussed in executive session?
Motion.
I have a motion from Ms. McMurro. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Hibbs. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion carries. Congratulations to all of our appointees. We appreciate you being in AISD so much. And now, Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler, and so we'll go through this list. This is first, a sincere appreciation for those individuals who are stepping up to different points in leadership. I really appreciate it. So we'll start with the principal for Bowie High School, Mr. Lee Jones. Lee Jones, stand up. Mr. Jones attended, yeah, there you go. Thank you, Mr. Jones. All right. So you'll see his information, but I'm going to read a couple of things about each one. I won't read everything, but just very proud of each individual. So starting with Mr. Jones, attended UT Arlington for Bachelor of Arts, UT Arlington for Master of Ed in Ed Leadership. Most recently, he was the interim principal at Bowie High School, has also served as an assistant principal at Bowie High School, a science teacher, a physical ed teacher, sports director, an elementary tutor, a kindergarten teacher assistant, which will come in very, very handy as a principal of Bowie High School. But so, Mr. Jones, congratulations on your appointment. Next, our Assistant Principal for the Arlington Collegiate High School, Maria Cole. Maria attended UT Arlington for Bachelor of Science in Interdisciplinary Studies, Dallas Baptist University for Master of Ed in Ed Leadership, most recently, an academic dean at Pope Elementary, has also been an academic dean at Workman, campus instructional coach at Ausley, and a 7th grade teacher and an 8th grade teacher. Maria, congratulations. Next, the Assistant Principal for Bowie High School, Cecily Crawford. Lane College for Bachelor of Science in Biology, and you'll see the information here in a minute, Angelo State University for Master of Science for Ed Leadership, most recently, an assistant principal in Dallas ISD. Welcome to Arlington, but has been in Arlington ISD, actually, as a biology teacher and coach at Bowie High School, and has also taught 7th grade. Cecily Crawford, congratulations. Next, our PTEC Assistant Principal for Seguin High School is Andrea Hicks. Ms. Hicks is still smiling. Yeah, of course. So attended Texas A&amp;M University Commerce for Bachelor of Science in Elementary Health Education, A&amp;M Commerce for Interdisciplinary Studies. Education, A and M Commerce for Interdisciplinary Studies, Bachelors, and a Master of Education in Elementary Education. Ms. Hicks, most recently, and still is for a little bit, our K-12 English Language Arts Reading Curriculum Coordinator, has also been a dean of instruction at Anderson Elementary, has taught K-12 English Language Arts, or I'm sorry, has been a K-12 English Language Arts Academic Coordinator in Dallas, a specialist and a first grade teacher. Ms. Hicks, congratulations. Next, our assistant principal for Carter Junior High is Shay Leah Tave. She did, yeah. Tave attended University of Texas Arlington for Bachelor of Science in Interdisciplinary Studies, University of Phoenix for Master of Ed in Curriculum and Instruction. Most recently, was an assistant principal at Berry Elementary, has also been an assistant principal at Knox Elementary, and a third grade teacher at Knox Elementary as well. Ms. Tave, congratulations. Next, the assistant principal at Butler Elementary is Kelly McMar. Kelly attended U T Arlington for Bachelor of Science in Interdisciplinary Studies, U T Arlington for Master of Ed in Curriculum and Instruction in Math Education. Most recently, an instructional coach at Anderson Elementary, has been a fourth grade teacher and a fifth grade teacher. Kelly, congratulations. Next, our assistant principal for Hale Elementary is Dr. Jessica Greggs. Attended Louisiana State University for Bachelor of Arts in Elementary Ed, University of Phoenix for Master of Arts in Early Childhood Education, Stephen F. Austin for Doctor of Education in Ed Leadership. And you see all her experience, I'll go through some of it. Most recently, testing facilitator at Hale Elementary, has been a fourth grade ESL teacher, has been a curriculum resource teacher, an Algebra I Geometry, E O C remediation teacher, fourth grade, second grade, content coach, first grade, Head Start, and fifth grade. Dr. Greggs, congratulations. That concludes the appointments for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Congratulations to all of our appointees. We're proud of you. You were selected for your positions, don't forget that, that you, you were selected because we felt like you had leadership skills and that you were ready to lead the school and the students. So, thank you so much for stepping up and doing that, and please know how much you are And we know that you would love to stay to the very last minute, but we also know that you start, most of you start holiday tomorrow, right? So, we will excuse you if you would like to leave. You're welcome to stay if you would like, but it will not hurt our feelings if you're ready to go. Thank you for being here. Next, on our agenda, our discussion action item, and that is for our 2019 bond update. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Fowler, and tonight, we bring an item for your consideration, board's consideration regarding our bond update and some realignment that, that we're proposing. And so, tonight, Mike Parkos, Director of Facility Planning and Construction, will lead us through a presentation. Mr. Horn is out tonight, so Mike Parkos will take this, this item. And so, the board reviewed this in June, or the first part of this, I should say, in this realignment. So, some of this will sound familiar, but we're ready to recommend the second part of that. So, Mr. Parkos.
President Mays, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos. This is the follow-up to the June meeting where Phase One of the Bond Program realignment was approved. Just to go through some of the key areas of the Bond Program programming, which is adding restrooms to the classrooms where we need pre-K classrooms, is being done. The Fine Arts and Dual Language Academies, Arlington High School Fine Arts and Dual Language Academy is the next step after students graduate from Gunn. The Dan Diaperd Edition for the Career Tech Programming. For educational adequacy, we're building new playgrounds. Phase One is complete. We're in Phase Two right now. That'll be finished by January, and we should have Phase Three done by the end of 2023. The Fine Arts Facility Updates, we're doing improvements to the high schools. Right now, it's Martin High School Band Edition is out to bid, and then Athletic Field Facility Updates are Glasby Field, Martin High, at Martin High School, Wyomond, and Cravensfield. We also are adjusting the excess capacity in East Arlington, which is, we're rebuilding Berry and Thornton, and then we'll close Knox and Roarark after those are finished, and then we're going to rebuild Carter Junior High School farther to the east, so it's closer to the students that attend that area. And then facility condition improvements are M E P roofing and just repairs to existing This next slide is just a recap of the breakdown of the bond. Facilities is 852 million of the 966 million dollars. I think we showed you this slide before. This is the construction inflation from the year 2020 to 2021. Right now, construction inflation is running at about 18%. They expect it to be 12% by the end of this year. And then, if you go to the next slide, this slide shows bid prices versus costs. Bid prices are actually above cost, which means this is the first time in almost two years where contractors are actually, quote, making money. And then, in 2022, we should end up with 12% inflation, and then it's projected to go back to normal construction inflation rates, which are 3% to 4% per year. The timeline, if we started this Bond Program, Gunn and Crowe bid, and they were within budget, and then COVID hit in March of 2020, and once we had the repercussions of that, the Phase One playgrounds, food nutrition, and the admin building bid within budget, and it wasn't until almost 2021 where Webb, Thornton, and Berry, the three new elementaries bid, Webb came in under budget, then Thornton and Berry were in budget, and Shackelfords and Jones are right below budget. And then is when we experienced the biggest inflation. When we bid the playgrounds improvements for Phase Two, Duff and South Davis, they came in 30% to 40% over budget. We proceeded with the playgrounds. We had already done Phase One, and we needed to finish those, but Duff and, and South Davis, we rejected the bids on those, put those projects on hold till we came back to the board for this realignment program. Now, we are working on the Phase Two projects. Most of those are out to bid, are coming out to bid now. In fact, right now, we have Martin High School and Glasby Field is out to bid, Bailey Junior High is out to bid, and Joris General Contractors, who are doing the, who are the C M A R on Arlington High School, have G M P number two out to bid. The total of all four of those projects is about $100 million. So, I would say by mid-November, we'll have a good idea of how our estimates are and how those are tracking. In 2023, early in 2023, we're going to come to you with our recommendations for the architects for Phase Four and Five. We just had an R F Q for supplemental group of architects for, for Phase Four and Five, which are being reviewed now. And then, the Phase Four projects will start in 2024. Phase Five will select the architects in 2025, and we should wrap up the Phase Five projects So, the Bond Program that you, you approved the first phase in, at the June meeting, and you approved basically these three steps. We're going to proceed with all the Bond projects, we're not holding on anything. We're completing the projects that are under construction now, and then the critical projects that were addressed, we're spending the money that we need to, to make those happen, and that's Arlington High School, Fine Arts and Dual Language Academy, Bailey Junior High, and then it'll be at the Dan Diaperd Career and Tech Center Edition, and then the Security and Transportation Building. For the remaining projects, we are recommending that we focus on the critical needs of safety, security, accessibility for the students, and then the conditioned efficiencies, that's M E P upgrades, roofing, structural repairs, and finishes. For this last phase, the fourth part, we've refined the budgets, and then we've gotten campus input to decide which are the critical needs to get done. Which is, same as it's on this slide. And our recommendation is that you approve Phase Two of the Bond Program Realignment Are there any questions?
I'm trying to let you, I'm trying to let you speak. There we go. Mr. Hibbs?
Thank you, President Fowler, Dr. Cavassos, and the team that's working so diligently on this Bond Package. I know it's at difficult times with a lot of maneuvering, especially when the cost for everything has gone up. So, the due diligence of you and your team is much appreciated. President Fowler, without hearing any other comments, I would like to move that we accept the administration's recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Dr. Raish. Any discussion?
I, I did just learn that there is a actual motion that should have been read, so apologize about that. I move to approve Phase Two of the 2019 Bond Program Realignment Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. We have a, a motion from Mr. Hibbs and a second from Dr. Raish. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries in the affirmative. Thank you. We now move to discussion action. Whoop, no, I just said that one. We will now address the con, consent agenda items, which consist of routine items grouped together for approval as one bid. Unless removed from the consent agenda, these items will be acted on one time with no discussion. Trustees, are there any requests for items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda for further discussion? Seeing none, is there a motion to accept the agenda with the, is there a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion from Mr. Will Banks. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mrs. Mays. So, we have a motion from Mr. Will Banks and a second from Mrs. Mays. Please state, please vote. Vote carries in the affirmative. We now move to our discussion item two. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Fowler, and this evening, as part of our discussion item, we bring our 2023 Legislative Agenda Draft, and the committee, the Governance Committee has had an opportunity to review this agenda, revise it, edit it, and continue to provide input. Our legislative agenda is, is really significant as we calibrate so that we can properly advocate and, and a consensus and a calibration for the things that are important for our school district. And so, we work with our legislative consultant, Mr. David Anderson from Hillco, that leads us through this process and has an immense amount of wisdom when it comes to legislative affairs. How's that, David? And so, tonight, David will lead us through some of the big picture, then Dr. Hill will help us also with the agenda that we're drafting or that we've drafted in cooperation with Hillco. So, Mr. Anderson.
Very good. Dr. Cavassos, thank you, President Fowler, members of the board. I think we're ready to talk for a minute. As you consider the legislative agenda, you really have to look at the big picture of the 88th Legislative Session. This is going to be a particularly challenging session for everyone involved in public ed policy for several reasons, and I'd like to talk about some of the issues. In essence, what we have done is identify several lenses, we believe, will be used to view just about every education proposal this session. And you'll see that we have these identified school finance, human capital, learning lag, parental rights, and school safety. And I think you'll see that the graphic is a continuous chart, because in the Texas Legislature, when it comes to education, everything starts and ends with school finance. Everything else, all the other policy areas, regardless of how critically important it is, all of them are considered through that lens of school finance, and we think these other lenses will be particularly important this session. So, with school finance, some of the considerations for you as you determine exactly how you want to structure your legislative agenda include recapture mitigation, because contrary to what you may have read in newspapers, or you've heard from people who were involved in legislative session in 2019, recapture is a, is an issue that was not fixed. It really is a can that was kicked down the road. And because of the economic circumstances, you got a glimpse of those when you heard the update on the bonds, but because of all that has happened with the overall economic circumstances, recapture has hit a lot of districts much faster and much more significantly than was anticipated just three years ago. So, recapture mitigation is going to be important. The Texas School Coalition, the, that coalition of the property wealthy schools that are sending money back has developed some recommendations, and it's certainly something we'll be looking at and sharing those with you for your information as well. Inflation adjustment. Once again, you heard about this earlier. It's something that is no doubt hitting each of you individually, hitting your businesses, and certainly hitting the business operations in Austin. In our conversation with legislators, this is something that is very real to them as well. I believe that some recognition, some, some inflation adjustment in the basic allotment is a topic that will get a lot of positive attention in this session. The F S P surplus. We have a surplus that will be available to the legislature to address in Supplemental Appropriations Bill, so that additional funds could be made available for schools for the balance of the 2022, 23 school years. You know, this biennium ends on August 31st. Some of these funds could be made available. In our conversations with Dr. Cavassos and staff, with other superintendents and school districts around the state, two things that have come up most frequently are restored reduced funds for the, the technology and instructional materials allotment. I think you'll recall that $610 million approximately was taken from that fund in the, I'd like to tell you 11th hour of the legislative session, but it was really more like the 11th hour and 50th minute of the like the 11th hour and 50th minute of the session when those funds were removed. And so there's an opportunity to restore that. The funds that were removed basically hampered the flexibility that you have to address support, particularly technology support for instruction. I know that's something that's critically important to the staff and to Dr. Cavassos, and I'm sure to you as well. The other would be to look at existing allotments, not necessarily specific to Arlington, fast growth allotment, school safety allotment, and provide some immediate increase right there. So there will be a lot of attention to the FSP surplus. And of course, when you talk about school finance, certainly over the last 10 years, you can't talk about that without speaking to property tax relief. Lieutenant Governor Patrick has said this is going to be a significant priority for the upper chamber, and I have no doubt that a significant amount of money will be proposed for further compression of tax rates, which touches off a number of dominoes that get us back to recapture, inflation adjustment, and so forth. The last point that we're getting a lot of feedback on, and something I think that's important to you as well, is stable, predictable disaster funding. No one saw the pandemic coming. Certainly here, we don't have the risk that districts along the coast have with hurricanes, with flooding, some of the West Texas districts with tornadoes and other disasters. But what we've learned over the last two and a half years is relying on waivers from the commissioner to help us with our funding is not the right way to go. It makes it much more difficult for you to do your jobs, for all those people you appointed earlier tonight, and the people who are in their administrative jobs to do theirs as well. One consideration, it's a costly consideration, is replacing average daily attendance, weighted average daily attendance models with an average daily enrollment model. Most of the other states have done this. Just because other states are doing it, however, doesn't necessarily mean it's the right thing to do. But we point out that the ADA model is one that a number of states has moved away from. The average daily enrollment model makes much more sense in so many ways because whether students are on campus that day or not, you still have fixed costs for facilities, for salaries, for safety considerations that need to be addressed. So this is something that we think will be important for you to consider as well. Human capital. I know that not too long ago, we heard, we heard the Commissioner of Education say that we really don't have a teacher shortage. And I think that we have to be careful about how we parse our words. Certainly, when it comes to certified teachers, we have a number of certified teachers in Texas, probably enough to fill the positions. But a number of those certified teachers are doing other things right now. You've got one person in front of you that is a fully certified teacher, administrator, and superintendent. I haven't used those certifications in a long time, and at my age, probably won't be. But the teacher shortage and how we address that, whether it's salary and benefits, whether it's additional funding for TRS, whether it's through teacher certification policies and practices, this is something that is very real, and we believe will get some positive attention, and something that we know is important to you as well. It's not just the teacher shortage, it's also the professional and hourly staff shortage. And we see here, again, the salary and benefit implications, the license certification, and other regulatory barriers are things that should be considered this session. And then, once again, back to school finance. The implications here are pretty significant. One way to do this is to increase the basic allotment. Because right now, the law says that every increase to the basic allotment, a certain amount of that money has to go to compensation for employees. However, adding money to the basic allotment is not necessarily something that legislators get a lot of immediate credit for because that salary increase is indirect. It's not quite like being able to come back to Tarrant County and say, I passed a salary increase for teachers, for bus drivers, for librarians, whatever it may be. That's just one of the political issues that we have to be aware of when we start looking at what's best for the school district, an increase in the basic allotment, as opposed to what's best for the people who are actually making those decisions. And then the other flip side is what we've addressed, and that's the appropriated designated salary increase. The learning lag. Mr. Hibbs, I talk about the learning lag, not learning loss, because I really believe you can't lose something you never had. And that, that learning that the students did not have during the pandemic is not a loss. It's something, though, that we are lagging behind. And I certainly encourage you in your conversations with, with your delegation to focus on this notion of a learning lag. I know each of you individually, there's no doubt in my mind, that the most important thing that you do is provide the right policy and support so that students leave Arlington ISD better educated when they started. That's what it's about. That and the safety of our students are the two most important things. I think in all of our conversations with legislators, we need to be talking about how everything we do is aimed back at addressing this learning lag and helping students be where they need to be and even exceed that. Certainly, the young lady you recognized tonight, I was hoping that University of Texas Austin would be on her list because I was going to give her a card and say, we want to hire you to be one of our paid interns. I didn't hear it, though, so. But the, the learning lag has a number of implications, and I think this is important for you as you finalize your legislative agenda. One is the federal relief funds. Arlington ISD, in my opinion, has done a very good job of explaining to your community what you're using those funds for. I heard Dr. Wertz early on in a meeting, when I was here in the audience with you, talk about those funds and how they would be used and how they would be used to improve what we're doing instructionally. It's, I think it's very important for every district to be able to explain to the community, here are the deliverables with these federal funds. Because this is my 50th year to work in education. I started teaching 5th grade in 1973. We joke at times that throwing money at public ed is not the answer to the problem, and of course, our retort is, how do we know you've never tried? Well, in the past two and a half years, the federal government has tried throwing funds in education. And if we're not able to explain our deliverables and then demonstrate the success we've had with those, then it's going to be very difficult for anyone, certainly you, Dr. Cavassos, staff, me, to advocate for additional funding for public schools. The accountability for the TEA expenditures and processes is a subpart of this that we think is important. It may not necessarily rise to, to the level of including in your legislative agenda, but you're held accountable for funds. We really think that that accountability should exist at all levels of government. The accountability review is also a significant component of learning lag because this is the way the state measures how well you're doing with student learning. And you know that we've got a restructuring of the accountability system coming up. We think right now that workforce considerations, especially in Arlington, where you have done such a good job with your career and technical, your partnerships, this is something that, that you want to make sure your delegation recognizes also. That workforce preparation is something that really is equal to college readiness, the whole notion of college, career, military readiness. That's something that probably deserves some clarification, and we hope the legislator, legislators will put a pretty significant light on TEA and what they're doing with that to make sure that it's appropriate. And then the, the overall reliance on the single test, single day model, something that Arlington ISD has had a position on for as long as I have, have worked with you, and the recognition that you do more. And tonight's a great example, the recognition of your slab, the students, the group that You do more than what that one test measures, and our accountability system should reflect that. And again, that's something you've done before, and I hope you'll continue to do that. And then the balance between state and local decision-making, something that Arlington ISD has, has emphasized in prior years. The notion that the best instructional decisions are made close to the learner, not necessarily at 1701 North Congress, and that you need the choices for the vendors that you're using when it comes to reading assessments, whatever it may be. And Sarah, I know that's something that's near and dear to you because of your career in, in instruction. The idea that one, one assessment for a reading inventory or one program is suitable for 1,020 school districts and 200 charter schools makes no sense at all. So we hope that this is something that, that you will continue to emphasize. Parental rights. What we recognize is that we do have a national agenda in play. It's something that is important to people in Arlington, in North Texas, across Texas, and across the country. But this attention to parental rights is a national agenda and one that doesn't necessarily recognize that we already have, as you see on the bottom in Education Code, Chapter 26, a very well-defined list of parental rights and responsibilities. And all of you know, as parents and as trustees, you have to have the responsibilities to go with those rights. So we think that, that what you have there certainly makes that point. We thought it was important to emphasize, again, that the pandemic impact is certainly something that has, has helped put the spotlight on, on parental rights. Because there are a lot of parents who weren't necessarily as clued in about what was happening with their kids, and during the pandemic, they've become more aware and want to be more aware and want, and want to be more involved. I know all of you want them to be involved. It's in the parental rights area that we believe you'll see voucher legislation. And the trustees have had a very strong position about vouchers for a long, long time. It's the, it's a priority for the governor, it's a priority for the lieutenant governor. We believe that there are a lot of different ways that this could be offered, including a direct voucher bill. But we think you'll also see a voucher bill, voucher language brought forward through parental rights and responsibilities legislation. It's something that we'll certainly be very attuned to. We have a special ed funding commission that's going to be making some recommendations, and that's another area which we know from, from prior sessions. It's, it's the special ed voucher that becomes the nose in the camel's tent. And again, consistent with the position of you as board members and your prior board members, this is something that, that will be very important for us. And then finally, school safety. It goes without saying, but I'm going to say it anyway, that the unfortunate circumstances, tragic circumstances in Uvalde has been the refocusing incident on school safety. I would encourage you, again, in your conversations in this draft, to emphasize local solutions. The notion that the best school safety decisions are made close to the facility and close to the parents who have students in that facility. A number of people in Austin pushed back immediately when we, when we start talking about, well, you're, you're encroaching on local control. The best decisions about school safety are made close to the facility. And all the high schools you have, they don't all need the same thing. And your older campuses don't need the same thing that your newer campuses do. Who knows best? The people on that campus who are working with Dr. Cavassos and staff. So I encourage you to emphasize the best decisions are made closest to the facility when it comes to school safety. I put this up here, I think that differentiating between policy decisions and practical applications are going to be important for us in this session. One thing that I've said to trustees around the state for the last six months, one of the toughest things you're going to have to do over the next year is say no to some ideas about school safety that just don't make sense for Arlington ISD. Somewhere else they may. But you're the ones that have to make the determination when Dr. Cavassos and staff brings recommendations forward. We want to make sure that the legislature this spring doesn't do anything that gets in the way of you doing that in a, in an effective way. School finance implications, again, increase in the school safety allotment, possibly the restructure of distribution is something to consider also. There are, as soon as we start looking at that, Mr. Will Banks, the dominoes start to fall. The notion of, does it make more sense for Arlington to fund a safety allotment on a campus basis with some differentiation for elementary and middle and high school? Or does it make sense to do it on a student basis, but with the flexibility at the district level to use those funds where they're needed to the greatest degree? Rather than, these funds are going to have to be used where these students are. And so that's, again, the notion of making decisions at the local level where you're closest to what the issues are makes great sense. I really do believe that we'll see a pretty significant increase in that allotment. You know, the allotment is, is a paltry $9, and I'm looking over at staff, about 57 cents, I think. That's, that's not enough to make a difference. You have a critical mass of students that even at $10, you've got some funds that you can work with. I think the reason we'll see some, some attention to the distribution is that we have 800 independent school districts that just don't have that many students. When you've got 200 students, you're getting $10 a student, what are you going to do with that amount of money? So we even could see a model, and this is something that when we see the legislation, we'll be working with staff so that you're aware, establishing a minimum amount per district, that no district will receive less than this amount, and then after that, there's going to be a funding on a per, per student or per campus basis. This is really wide open and something that, that I think constant communication from us back to the district to you will become very, very important. Single issues in the session, Chapter 313, restoration, the ISD charter tensions and the related policies there. Charters were created in 1995. I have never seen the tension between the charter community and the ISD community as, as tense as it is right now. I think that we'll also see recent legislation revisited, specifically House Bill 4545, the bill that no one really wants to take credit for right now. I think Dr. Cavassos heard a little bit about this yesterday at the Region 11 meeting with the Commissioner of Education. That bill is a fundamentally flawed bill, in my opinion, and it was one that was passed without the usual vetting through hearings and the opportunity for, for trustees, superintendents, and others to advocate for changes. We have two select commissions. I mentioned the special ed. We also have a virtual commission. I don't have a lot of confidence that we're going to see recommendations from the virtual ed commission that will really be significant. I just, in watching that, I just don't think that's going to happen. Once again, our hope is, and our effort will be, whether this is part of your agenda or not, our effort will be to make sure that, to the greatest extent possible, the authority to make decisions about virtual education programs without financial penalty is in the hands of trustees and district leadership at the school district level. And then the last thing I've touched on a couple of times, and that is the, the concern about the balance between state and authority, state and local authority, that over the last six years in particular, we've seen that pendulum swing very much toward more decisions being made at the state level at the cost of authority at the local school level. And once again, the best instructional decisions are those made close to the learner, the best school safety decisions are those made close to the campus. So these are other issues, and we hope that all of this is taken as part of that gestalt as you, as you look at the, look at the legislative agenda. So if there are no questions, I'm going to step aside and let Dr. Hill take this from here.
Thank you, David. I'm sure there would be questions, so don't go too far. So, President Fowler, superintendent, and board. So what we've done over the last several weeks is taken all of this information that's been presented to us from David's firm and their work, and crafted, created a, an agenda that's in draft form that kind of proposes what we want to consider as a legislative agenda. We've had a lot of conversation with staff from every one of the departments that are represented in those circular topics that David presented in his very first slide. And so we've had back and forth conversation with David and his team, and the Board Governors' Committee has vetted this and had some, some feedback, and we continue to vet this. And so our next steps are to just, you, you've had a copy of this, to review it, just have some more discussion about it, and what, what other options or what other discussions may be necessary as we move forward. So we would just kind of open it up for some questions now, based on the draft agenda that you've been presented with.
Do I have any trustees with questions or comments? Ms. McMorra?
Thank you, Dr. Hill, and thank you, Mr. Anderson. I did have a question for you. I am just very fired up. I am just very fired up about the ADA legislative session. And we recently attended TASSA-TASB EdCon, and we we heard from other boards and superintendents and senior staff across the state about what the hot topics will be this legislative session. And I'm particularly excited about how our district's priorities really align with what other districts. And hopefully, that momentum, that collective momentum, will, you know, achieve what we want. And I really zoom in on increasing the basic allotment for public schools, because I feel as though that's the umbrella that will give us the ability to increase pay for our hard-working teachers and staff, keep up with inflation, and, you know, without devastating our budget, and, you know, improve school safety, which is ever-changing. And that's not a new conversation in Arlington ISD, but we need their help. And so I'm very excited about that. I I really do appreciate your partnership, and I appreciate Ms. Coleman working with us on the Governance Committee. She's been wonderful, very knowledgeable. I just have a question for those watching tonight, our parents, our our staff members. I know it's not too early to advocate as an individual. So what action would you advise citizens who care about public ed, particularly here in Arlington ISD? What advice would you give them between now and the 88th legislative session to take action?
You're absolutely right. It's it's never too soon to start. Arlington ISD is is fortunate to have a veteran delegation. And yes, the lines have changed a little bit. You're going to have a new senator. He's not inexperienced. He's Representative King, now Senator-elect King, is someone who has demonstrated over and over again, he is a very, a very effective and skillful operator within the legislative process. And I think any district he represents is fortunate to have him. You know, his daughter is a teacher, and and he hears from her regularly, I'm sure, about the issues that we're facing in schools. The rest of your delegation is an experienced delegation. And very frank, it ranges, it runs the gamut of the political gamut. And you're fortunate to have that, because really, I'm a believer that that the best legislation is legislation that is passed with some tension. If you don't have tension, as Shakespeare noted, if you don't have tension in Act Two, you don't have a successful resolution in Act Three of his plays. That's true with the legislature. And with your delegation, you're going to have an opportunity to get feedback from across the the political spectrum, which does a better job of of getting us to the finish line on this. I would say to the parents, know the issues, understand what you value, and and they know best what they value, obviously. And then begin talk, begin to talk to your your legislators. Talking with staff and talking with the members is very important. Very honestly, talking with staff sometimes is even more important than talking to members. The legislature works through committees. If you're on the committee, county affairs on county affairs, or public ed on our education affairs, if you're on the committee, you really want to be talking to the member to the extent you can. Otherwise, a staff member is going to be much more knowledgeable than the great majority of members on those issues. So I would say to your parents and your other constituents, begin to talk to the staff now. Find out what their interests are, and then make sure that you explain why something is important to you, and make sure that they know how to get back in touch with you. They have email, they have phone numbers, because the communication cannot start too soon.
Thank you. And, you know, getting the word out there is so important. We can talk to our local legislators now, is what I'm hearing you say. And, you know, as a district, we're planning on publishing these legislative priorities on our district website, so that will help us as trustees get the word out there as well. And I do want us as a board to start thinking about perhaps making our legislative priorities perhaps the next topic for our trustee talks, so we can have those community conversations and get the word out there even more. And I just really appreciate you helping us do that. Thanks, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you for your comments about my colleague, Ms. Coleman. Also, I took a few weeks off for vacation, and she covered things very beautifully in my absence. She's one of the brightest, brightest, most talented people working in advocacy in the Capitol. Thank you.
Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, President Fowler, and thank you, Mr. Anderson. I really appreciate the framework. Had a few questions about some of the specific topics, but I think you were spot on. I don't know if you have the slide with the circle?
Yes.
But it all starts and ends with school funding.
Yes.
And the way you guys have, you know, the framework is, I think, perfect for the times and perfect for this district in terms of what we're seeing. We can't escape the need for human capital.
No.
In terms of school finance, that's the biggest bucket under school finance, I think, is addressing the teacher shortage. Second of that, I would say, school safety. And I agree that include increasing the safety allotment is an area we definitely want to look at. And then probably almost as equal to that is the unfinished learning, or I like your term, learning lag. We see, we as a district have made great strides. You mentioned that when we talk, I like your comment you made earlier about throwing money at the solution. And 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 we don't know if it's worked because you haven't done it yet. Well, we have with Esser, and we have, as a district, made great strides and proven that it does pay off. But there's still a considerable amount of learning lag that's left to recover from. And so I think that's a key area where where we need to hone in and focus our efforts with our local delegation, and things like increasing the base allotment. But we just, we're going to have our presentation talking about how we're prepping for the new STAR test and how it's all online. And we're going to be even more dependent on technology and the fact that they cut the 600 million plus, as you said, from the TEMA allotment.
Yes.
Is critical. We need that 600 million, and then some probably restored, because we're all dependent on technology.
That cut was roughly equivalent to $110 per student.
Yeah.
So it's pretty easy. It's pretty easy to see what the impact is in Arlington ISD. You know, a district with 60,000 kids at $100 apiece, that's serious money for the technology support that's necessary for instruction. That technology support is also important for a district as they prepare for the online administration. An Anderson opinion, Mr. Will Banks, Texas is not prepared. Texas schools are not prepared for an online, a complete online assessment. Some districts are more prepared than others, but we have a lot of districts that just are not there yet.
No.
And I'm I'm very concerned about moving too quickly in that direction. And if that is a concern here, I would, it doesn't necessarily have to be a part of your legislative agenda, but it's certainly something I would encourage you to to include on your list of conversation topics as you meet with your delegation.
Yeah. No, absolutely. And I think we're, we're going to hear how we've had a little test run recently, and how that didn't quite go as well.
Yep.
And for a district as large as we're and as blessed as we are with a great technology team, I can't imagine what Millshue or a smaller rural district is doing right now to try to prepare for that onslaught with the new STAR. One of the kind of areas that I was concerned was missing focus, but it was in your slide at the very end, is addressing 4545.
Yes.
Talk about an unfunded mandate. And rushed legislation with a lot of unintended consequences. You know, the worst of the worst examples of legislation that sometimes comes out of Austin, or oftentimes comes out of Austin. So I kind of, you know, the one thing I lament about the framework and the specific items under each section is that we didn't have a line item specifically addressing the undue burden that that causes on our students and our staff, and the fact that it's a huge unfunded mandate. And so one of my recommendations to Mr. Hill and and the team putting in our Governance Committee is to kind of promote that as a bullet under the unfinished learning or the learning lag section, because that's a huge one that everyone's going through. And I think we do have the momentum, as you said, in, or I think you said, it almost got across the wire in one of the special sessions, but didn't. And it needs to be picked up again. So I think that was, you know, hopefully gives it a much stronger chance of passing in this session.
When when 4545, which is, as you'll hear from leadership at TEA in various venues, they didn't have strict enforcement of 4545 during the 2122 school year. They were counting on districts to make a good faith effort, but they plan to have a more strict enforcement of it in this school year. Again, the bill was not well thought out, in my opinion. When this time last year, I will, I can say with complete confidence that the one topic that came up in conversations with me by members and staff more than any other was something to this effect. I'm hearing from superintendents, I'm hearing from trustees, that 4545 is a tremendous burden and boondoggle for schools. Is it as bad as they are saying? It's probably not as bad as they're saying. It's probably worse than what they're saying, is my response, because every district was affected a little bit differently. And was there good intent behind that? Yes.
Yes.
But there aren't enough hours in the day without a lot of very specialized help, including online tutoring, which is not as effective for some kids as others. Without all of those things in place, that bill is going to be impossible to manage, the requirements of that bill.
Yeah. So, yeah, I would like to see that kind of promoted in our priorities. And that ties in with, well, I lost my train of thought, but, you know, it was going to tie into my next thought, which escapes me. But
The unfunded mandate question is, it is, it's a bit of a dilemma for trustees as you develop your legislative agenda. Because on one hand, you want to be able to identify very specifically those issues that are troublesome for you. On the other hand, the notion of a blanket unfunded mandate is something that my experience is that a number of members just immediately start to back away. So as you consider that, don't let the the broad unfunded mandate take away from the critical mass of your legislative agenda. Instead, Mr. Will Banks, I think you're on the right track. Be very specific about something such as House Bill 4545.
The undue burden.
Yes. And it's something, too, that you don't have to have the explanation of why this thing isn't working well, or why it's an undue burden. That's something that can be can be in a separate document that we can use to explain as this comes up. Because you want your legislative agenda to be to be clear, to be succinct, and to address those areas that are that are of the greatest importance to Arlington ISD, that explains what you hope your delegation and the rest of the legislature will do so that you're able to do a better job of educating students and keeping students safe.
Absolutely. But 4545 does kind of segue into the other point I was going to make, which is another huge area for us is with the learning lag, is that continuity of interventions and strategies that we've proven successful at here in AISD, and the need for those to continue, and the need to increase the basic allotment and some of these other allotments to continue to address those, and and do it in a way that's more practical and doesn't and and isn't as onerous as 4545, for instance.
Well, the point that that you and your colleague have made about the basic allotment is one that can't be overlooked. The basic allotment is the most efficient and most effective way to provide funding to schools to address the issues in that community. And here in Arlington, address the many communities that comprise Arlington ISD. And that's where I hope that that your delegation will recognize, the basic allotment is, again, the most effective and the most efficient way to address school finance and these other topics that are the lenses through which decisions will be made this session.
Yeah. I appreciate that. One more question. Can I put you on the spot?
Yes, sir.
Vouchers.
Yes.
What's the over and under on if we can successfully successfully beat back that ugly horse?
We know from recent history that a voucher bill will likely come out of the Senate.
Oh, it's guaranteed.
Pretty immediately. And it will come out fast and furious. The question will be in the House. And we know in the last legislative session, the test vote on vouchers, the Herrero Amendment to the Appropriations Bill that says no state funds will be used for those purposes, was passed on a on a vote of 114 for and roughly 30 against. That's a good measure. And we've looked at the turnover in the House. Who voted for that? Who voted against it? Who's coming back? Who's not? And and we work closely with Raise Your Hand Texas. This is a critical issue for that organization. We real, I do believe that that a voucher program can be can be stopped this session. It's going to be in the House, and I think we all know that. That's no great insight.
Yeah.
It will not be on 114 against, because when the difference between voting for a ceremonial vote such as that and voting for a a true voucher bill, when all of the forces are brought to bear on members to support that legislation or to oppose that legislation, there will be some defections from that 114. Question is, can we hold the line? You know, a critical, a critical factor in this is going to be the leadership in the House, not just the Speaker, but the the people who are
The committee?
The key leaders in the House around the Speaker, the so-called Cardinals, and the House Public Ed Committee Chair.
Any idea? It's too early to tell. Any idea if that's going to be?
It is too early to tell. Right now, Chairman Dutton is the, Harold Dutton from Houston is Chair of the Committee.
He's not really friendly with us on that issue, is he?
No, he's not. Chairman Dutton will be reelected in November. And it, there are so many factors that go into consideration for appointments of chairs. The Republican State Committee has been very clear. They believe in a Republican-controlled chamber. There should be no Democratic chairs. We recognize, though, that the reality of the Texas House of Representatives is that there will be Democratic chairs. The question will be what committee, what committees? So
Yeah.
I will tell you that I'm, I have friends who say I take a little Mary Sunshine approach, that I may be overly optimistic. But I think I'm a realist on this, and I do believe that that is, that is an issue that will have a difficult time passing the entire Texas Legislature.
Our friends in the rural districts hopefully will come to our aid again.
Yep. It's, the circumstance is very different right now than than where they have been for the most of part of the last 25 years, in that we have had a governor in the past, Governor, our Governor Bush was a good example. Governor Bush's statement was, if the legislature sends a voucher bill to me, I'll sign it. That's different from saying, we're going to pass a voucher bill this session. And that's really where Governor Habbitt is. He and Lieutenant Governor Patrick have been very clear about this as a priority for him.
Now, again, as always, we appreciate the value you guys bring in helping us frame our legislative agenda each year. I think this one's spot on as a framework. I mean, the only thing I would, if I was hard-pressed to object at one of those five areas is, you pointed out, in the Education Code, we've got a strong parental rights bill. So I really don't see a need to advocate for that unless don't see a need to advocate for that unless it gives us good cover and ammunition and entree into some of our local delegation. So...
I was very fortunate to get to work with, with Commissioner Mike Moses and Commissioner Jim Nelson, and both of them...
Love Mike Moses.
At times said, as do I. Both of them at times said, if the legislature wants to pass a bill to require us to do something we're already required to do, don't get in the way.
Yeah. Now, that's sage advice.
Yes.
Sage advice. But again, thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you.
And for Mr. Hill, I like what I see. There are some tweaks. I think some, I'd like to see a little bit of some structural tweaks made. There are a few typos, like in the next to the last priority. We've got 2021 instead of 2023. Just little things like that. But hopefully, we're going to go through, I know you've done a lot of really hard work. Okay, good. I was just informed by my colleague, the English teacher, that it was fixed. So...
Thank you.
But yeah, no, great work. But, you know, hopefully, we'll be able to, all of the trustees will be able to give a little bit more input on the structure.
Gotcha.
But it's good, good stuff.
Thank you, Mr. Wilbanks. Can you request again, Ms. Mays? Ms. Mays?
Thank you, President Fowler. And I've scratched off half of my comments and questions, so I'll make it very brief. Thank you, Dr. Hill. Thank you, Mr. Anderson, for meeting with the Governance Committee and going over the information and coming up with our draft to once again get to our final draft. One, two comments. One is, Mr. Anderson, I think that we, we appreciate everything I'll do, and I think we may need, we might be leaning a little bit more, or I'll speak for myself, on communicating our priorities as we do year for year. I've worked with you for nine years, and it's, it's been a pleasure. But some of these things are on here that we've been talking about for almost nine years. You know, allotment, our TRS after, active care, keeping public funds in public schools, unfunded mandates. So I just want to make sure that as we continue with our priorities, and they're still on our list, they don't just look like something we've left on our list, that we are truly still advocating for these things. So just might be leaning on you to make sure that those conversations are going in the right direction so that they're not overlooked, although they may not dominate the initial conversation. And then the final thing I want to say is it's, it's very interesting. Ms. McMura mentioned how other districts at Tassie-Tasby were aligning with similar priorities, but it's, it's interesting, and I think it's just the way that it is, that when, when things start interfering with your ISD for educating your kids, until it really hits you, you may not be a strong advocate for that. But now I've noticed a lot of people jumping on the board, advocating for a lot of the same thing. So that's very telling. Thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Mays. Dr. Rice?
Thank you, President Fowler. Mr. Anderson, I have a question for you. And this is a little bit of tea leave reading request. So on the accountability system, I appreciate the points that you made in, in the presentation, things that we have advocated for year, or session in and session out. So this year, or I should say last year, with the results that were just published, even our TEA Commissioner was very surprised at how much ground was gained from that learning lag that we're speaking of. And my concern, as I know you have seen much longer than I have, is that when it comes to tweaking an accountability system, when everybody is actually performing at a high level, oh, we need to change the system. Do you think that that is going to happen or be discussed, or are we going to really focus on, let's strengthen this system, and let's not just make it a complete reliance, although it seems to get more engrossed in star, star, star only?
Yes.
What do you think about that?
My concern about the accountability system is that here we are in 2022, 23, and the system itself has become more complex.
Yeah.
But it doesn't necessarily, it has not necessarily become more robust with regard to how we measure things. And just making something more complex doesn't necessarily mean it's better. You know, we don't have to go back very far to know that the most complex issue that you dealt with as trustees was school finance. No longer. The most complex issue you deal with right now is accountability. And it's, to me, it's a shame that here we are 30 years, 32 years after the accountability system really began, and we don't have other ways of measuring school success or student performance beyond a single test on a single day. When that began, it was intended as a dipstick measure to determine how well our campuses are doing and how well our districts are doing. And that, as former Commissioner Robert Scott, it, it morphed in, in some ways that weren't very positive. And it's the additional, the addition of high stakes for students that particularly make the reliance on a single test on a single day troublesome. There are a lot of ways to measure school success and student success, but they're expensive. And that's, I think, one of the reasons why Texas hasn't embraced some of those. That we can, we can continue to talk about, well, we hold the teachers, we hold the students accountable, and we do it in this way, but it's really, it's no more sophisticated. I mean, the test may be more sophisticated, but, but it's not measuring things any better or any more efficiently than it did 10 or 20 years ago.
Yeah.
There are a lot more bells and whistles, perhaps, but that doesn't necessarily mean that it is a better measure of student performance.
Right.
And the, a lot of the control for the accountability system is in the, in the Office of the Commissioner of Education. And that's probably the right place to have it, but there needs to be, I think there should be checks and balances on that. And that's what we really don't seem to have many more of now than we did 10 years ago.
Right. Right. And the redefining of what those expectations are going to be for all districts, including ours...
Yes.
That we're being held accountable for this spring, and we don't know what those are yet.
No.
So legislatively, it'd be nice to be able to have some checks and balances there.
It would be. And the North Texas Commission has done a lot of work on this, as you all know very well because of your engagement. Raise Your Hand Texas has had an ongoing convening on accountability, the Texas School Alliance, you're critically important member of the Texas School Alliance, not too long ago, President, Arlington was president of that. They've done a lot of work on this. My colleague, Dee Carney, has been involved in all three of those. And the people who are the expert in accountability, who come at this from a school district perspective, I think have a lot of recommendations. But the role of the advisory committees to, to the education agency are diminished from where they were 10 years ago. And so we just don't see, we don't see that input. I think Sarah knows that very well from your work with Mansfield. So it's a dilemma. And I think we've got to help our legislators understand, we want to be accountable. To Ms. Mays' point, I want to be accountable to you, and I hope you'll hold my feet to the fire on these things. You want to be accountable to your public. The students want to be accountable for their learning, so do teachers. There's got to be a better way for us to measure school effectiveness. As I said early on, when you bring those kids in from Gunn Middle School, and you see their level of engagement in fine arts, and when you see your slab members and the way they engage with you, and so many other ways, so many other boxes we could check for Arlington ISD, you're doing things very, very well. Student product is there to show, to demonstrate that. How is that measured in our accountability system? And right now, it's not. It's just not.
Yep. And it hurts our socioeconomically disadvantaged population, and it hurts our whole community economically. Because what do all the algorithms use on all those websites? The red, yellow, green?
Yes.
It's just the test. It does not reflect what's happening.
The Skittles charts. Yep. What they, what they show is a direct correspondence between socioeconomic status of the students and performance on the test.
Yep.
And the districts that are, that are dominated by the overachieving students or overachieving parents are the ones that don't worry about star because they're going to blow the top out of it. And they're able to focus on things such as Cambridge International or International Baccalaureate or AP. You're able to do some things in some areas because you have students that come in like that. You add value to students in this district in a way that many other districts wish they could. The accountability system, again, doesn't reflect how you add value in so many ways.
Yep. Thank you.
Get off my soapbox there for you, Dr. Rice.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. Well, Mr. Anderson, we're facing some very uncertain times in public education. And we appreciate all that you and your team is doing to, to tell us what we need to advocate for and for advocating for us. I guess our hope is that our legislators will listen, that they will fight for us, not against us, and that we'll see something good out of this legislative system. But thank you so much for all that you do for us in Austin, and know that you're appreciated, and, and keep doing the good work. Thank you, sir. Before we move on, I'd like to thank our Board Governance Committee for all the work that they're doing as far as the legislative agenda. Justin Chapa, who serves as Chair, Keisha Mays, and Sarah McMura. Dr. Michael Hill is also working with the legislative agenda, and we thank you all so much for your hard work on that. We are now ready for Discussion B, House Bill Three and District Improvement Plan Progress Monitoring Update. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler. And this evening, we bring for your review the progress we're making on some of our, our goals. You have the goal calendar and the things that the Board approved. And so this is our first report out of this school year, as we've had curriculum assessment information and data back. So there'll be some reorientation of that, some of the reorientation of the goal, and then, and then you'll hear some information related to the actual work that's happening on the improvement side of the campuses. So at this time, I know she stepped out, and so at this time, I am going to ask Dr. Lopez, and I'll be slow in my pronunciation there. So that's Dr. Lopez to, to lead us in this presentation. Again, this is an opportunity to share the results. And, and I can't emphasize enough, when we get to these points, that this is a point in time. This is one view. It doesn't tell the whole picture. It tells a part of the picture. It's important information, but, but we should keep it in perspective at this time of year as the first six weeks has ended. So, Dr. Lopez, take it away.
Thank you, sir. President Fowler, members of the Board, and Dr. Cavassos, thank you for your time this evening. I'm going to go through our House Bill Three and District Improvement Plan Goal Progress checkup based on our curriculum assessment results. Our, our first curriculum assessment took place at the, last week of September. We ended on September 22. And so we don't report out on every single grade level. So I'll include the elementary, the third grade, junior high being eighth grade, and then the high school is our EOCs, and just in reading and math. So the slides are all formatted in a similar way. So just kind of overall performance, and then broken down by demographics. So our third grade reading goal is to increase the percentage of third grade students who approach grade level expectations on star reading from 69% to 71% by August 2023. And our latest RCA result for that was at 53%. Now, that is low, especially compared to our star 2022 performance, and then moving towards our goal. Had a slight issue on our third grade reading. There are a little bit of anomaly. You'll see that there's a, a better, I'd say, say, performance towards goals in the, all the other grade levels. So I can answer, respond more to that at the end. But I'm going to go ahead and keep moving for now. So when we look at our third grade reading, the goal is repeated increasing the percentage from 69 to 71. And so you see that that 53% is there for the all-student category, and then the remaining demographic percentages follow. When I move into junior high, we're going to report out on eighth grade, and the goal is to increase the percentage of eighth grade students who approach grade level expectations on star from 78 to 81%. And based on our CA1, we were at 80%. So an increase from what we did in star in 2022, moving towards our goal of 81. And that first row shows our all-student, the 80 to the 81, and then the remaining subgroup breakdown is following. For high school, we have two tests that we report out on English I and English II. For English I, we want to increase the percentage of students who approach grade level expectations on the star English I from 64 to 68% by August 2023. And a slight dip there from what we did in '22. We were at 64% on CA1. We were at 63%. So want to make progress towards that 68. And this is broken down by subgroup. And for our English II assessment, we wanted to increase the percentage of students who score at the approaches grade level or above on star English II from 70 to 72% by August 2023. And for CA1, we were right there where we want to be by the end of the year. So that one's 72, met that 72 on CA1. And then this next slide shows that broken down by demographic. And then moving into our District Improvement Plan goal, we had adopted our, first of our academic goals for the, for Goal One, Performance Objective, was our overall district readings. This is going to be all of our assessments, third through high school. And we had, y'all had approved a goal to increase the percentage of students who approach grade level expectations on star reading from 71 to 74 by August 2023. And for all of our reading assessments, we were at 69% on this CA1 administration. And then this shows that broken down by, by demographic group. So I'm going to go ahead and move into math. Same grades, third, eighth, and high school. So for third grade math, we were wanting to increase the percentage of third grade students who approach grade level expectations on star math from 62 to 67. And we were slightly above that with 68% at the approaches level or better on CA1. And this shows that broken down by the subgroups. And moving into our junior high with our eighth grade class, increase the percentage of eighth grade students who approach grade level expectations on star math from 64 to 72. So still working our way towards that end-of-year goal. We're at 66% on CA1. And then broken down by the subgroups. And then the only math test at the high school level is that Algebra I. We want to increase the percentage of students who approach grade level expectations on star Algebra I from 72 to 75%. And for CA1, we, we hit that 75% goal. And then that is broken down by subgroup. That leads into the Performance Objective II of our academic goal in our District Improvement Plan, which is our overall district math goal. We want to increase the percentage of students who approach grade level expectations on star math from 64% to 70%. And we are above what we did in star 2022 at 66%, and still moving towards our goal. And that's broken down by subgroup in the same way. Going to also report out, not on the curriculum assessment portion, but on the remaining dip goals that were adopted. So our, our second goal was college, career, and So our, our second goal was college, career, and military readiness. And we want to increase the percentage of students who receive a CCMR point from 63 to 67%. And our current senior class is at 48%. Now, the, there's still opportunity in their senior year to earn their CCMR point. However, the class that we have now is not going to be used in accountability this year. As you may recall that there's a lag, and so the 63% that was accomplished by the graduating class of 2022 is actually what's going to go into our 2023 A to F calculations. And then we all, y'all also adopted an attendance goal. AISD students will increase their attendance rate from 90.9 to 93% during this current school year. And we are, for the first six weeks, at 94.4%. So above our goal. We'd like to stay there. We hope that, that maintains. And I am now going to turn it over to Dr. Wertz.
Evening, President Fowler, members of the board. I'm here tonight just to remind everybody of what the five focused areas are in terms of how we're responding to our students and their improvement in classroom instruction this, this year. We have identified five primary areas that we're going, that we have been working with teachers and campus leaders on. And, and also integrate our coaching process into specific areas around literacy and mathematics. So there are, there are five areas. The Literacy Plan, our Comprehensive Math Plan, the implementation of instructional interventions specifically through our MTSS and House Bill 4545 strategies. And then the use of district assessments and screeners to drive some daddy-driven decision-making processes that are taking place in the PLCs. All of this is underscored around four primary best practices that we are really working with teachers and mastering in the classroom, specifically in the areas of reading mathematics. And that's around standards alignment, assessment, formative assessment and feedback, small group instruction, and then also differentiation. So in mathematics and elementary, we're really focusing on three specific areas in our Comprehensive Mathematics Plan. One is the concrete representational abstract strategy or model, which really moves students into really thinking more about mathematics rather than one answer or one way to get to a specific solution. That there are multiple ways to think about how you actually land on a solution. In the CRA instructional approach, you move students from a concrete place where they're manipulating manipulatives to something that's more representational or pictorial in nature, all the way down to an algorithm. And then we're helping students make that link into a problem-solving process or model where there are four specific steps. And the reason why we wanted to focus on problem solving is because as students matriculate from kindergarten all the way through 12th grade, their content in mathematics becomes more and more complex. And we wanted to ensure that students sense of continuity in the way they're approaching a problem-solving process as they go through the curriculum. And then finally, fact fluency. One of the areas that we noticed in our data in terms of students' progress in mathematics was specifically connected to their fact fluency. Oftentimes, we think of our facts as just memorizing facts, and actually, that is what we're actually not encouraging students to do. So in our instructional process, we, we're really helping students understand what the relationship between the facts are and how you can manipulate those to actually land on answers and make sense of the problems. In junior high and high school, the areas are the same with the exception of one, which is the use of the instructional block. In highs, in junior high school, in high school, they have different sized instructional blocks. High school's a 90-minute block, whereas junior high is more like 45 minutes. And so what we've done is outlined in the Mathematics Comprehensive Plan is what should happen during that 90-minute time period versus a 45-minute time period? How do you maximize that to include time for students to engage in problem-solving in class? In elementary, our focus areas for, of the Comprehensive Literacy Plan are primary grades, word study, shared reading, and guided reading. And in sixth, third through sixth, we've also added shared writing and guided writing. As you know, in the STAR redesigned, writing is being integrated into the reading assessment. And so we wanted to make sure that writing served a, played a prominent role in our focus in those grade levels. These, these specific areas in the Literacy Plan were driven by foundational concepts that we noticed were lacking behind in our screener data in previous years. And so when we designed strategies for this year, as part of our analysis, we aligned some of the specific practices in the Literacy Plan to that data. In secondary, in high school, the focuses were on close reading, shared reading, and, shared writing, and guided writing. Close, right, close reading is really about understanding the text and leveraging text evidence to really justify some of your thinking as you, as you work through your comprehension of what you're reading in the, in the, in the classroom. And all of this is underscored around these, this coaching that we've been doing around, in mathematics and literacy. So in our coaching cycles, we're focused specifically around four primary best practices, which I know you're aware of. And those are being underscored specifically with teachers that are in the mathematics and literacy classroom to help them apply these best practices in the context of those two plans that I just mentioned. Instructional interventions are another area of really focusing on providing individualized differentiated instruction for kids who need foundational concepts still reiterated in their instructional process. In, in the MTSS system, it really is an umbrella that focuses on two sides of the interventions. One is behavioral in nature and one is academic in nature. You may have heard the word response to intervention or the term response to intervention in the past. That's basically what this idea is. It just sits under a larger umbrella, which is a multi-tiered systems of support. So students who are participating in MTSS this year, we tier students based on how they're performing. 80% of your students should generally do well in a typical tier-one instructional design. About 20% of students don't necessarily do, actually, about 20% of students need a little bit more than what you typically would get with the general population in the classroom. This year, to start this process with some level of intentionality, campuses and campus principals are focused around really tracking and monitoring students who are falling in the top tier or tier three, which is your top two or 3% students who really need really significant interventions. And those interventions are being monitored and processed using our system in frontline. House Bill 4545 dictates that students who failed STAR in any of the core content areas are required to receive 30 hours of additional tutoring for each content area for, in which they failed. So our students are being scheduled, and the hours in which they're receiving, the number of hours they're receiving their additional tutoring is being monitored and, and tracked to make sure that they are receiving the interventions that are aligned to their individual needs in, in connection to the requirements in the bill. And then finally, professional learning communities are happening at every school. And the Office of School Leadership has worked diligently to establish common expectations for the implementation of PLCs across all campuses with defined outcomes and clarity around the roles for each of the participants that are in the PLCs. And this is really, these PLCs are really designed to really drive the instructional process happening in the classroom and the adjustments that are made there. I'm going to turn it now over to Dr. Hill, who's going to speak to the approach to improving attendance.
So, thank you, Dr. Wertz. And so as we look at these goals that were presented by Dr. Lopez earlier, with the attendance goal of 93% across the district has been identified. And so we've worked with every campus to identify what their attendance goal should be in order to contribute to the district's 93% goal of attendance. And so some of the things that we're looking at is multifaceted approach to improving attendance is engaging the parents and the students. And whatever that looks like at the different campuses, we're going to leave that up to them. The executive directors are working with principals as we speak and have been doing so for a little while now to identify what, what those levers are at every campus to get student and parent engagement. Recognizing good and improved attendance, whether that through be through attendance incentives or some sort of recognitions, we'll, again, leave that up to the campus principals to decide. Monitoring the data and the practice. And so we've identified a couple of, of reports that we provide to campuses to really identify the students that are at the different tiers of absences and be able to really hyper-focus on the ones that are really contributing to, to the attendance issues and getting them back in school. Providing that personalized outreach early on in the process. We had a meeting with all the principals just last week to look at first six weeks' data. And they're already action planning and actually implementing things to try to address that. And then to look at a district-wide, almost programmatic response to just removing any barriers from attendance. And so, again, we don't want to try to develop that here. We want that to come from the grassroots, identify what's happening, and then let us try to respond to that at the district level. So that's what that multi-tiered approach looks like for improving attendance. We've tiered absences, and this really helps the principals. Once we presented them with this document, as well as the, the report that goes along with it. There's a lot of positive feedback, and so that we can look at the foundational absences. And I won't read all of it for you, but we categorize absences from foundational all the way up to tier three based on the number of absences and the percentage of absences that you have at that time during the school year. So that, so, sorry about that. Are there any questions or discussions specifically about the attendance piece or any of the other?
Dr. Rice?
Thank you, President Fowler. Yeah, Dr. Hill, on the, the tiers of absenteeism. So I, I know you said it's, it's more of a grassroots, and, and every, every school community is, is addressing what those needs are for their campus. At what point, and, and what resources do we provide at the district level for, say, the tier two, the tier three, for those, those families, those students that are really, really needing the, the help? What do we provide to the campuses as far as district resources? And is there any, any shortcomings there, anything that we're going to have to look for from a, a board perspective as far as budgetary amendments or anything like that to increase the resources?
So that's a great question. It's actually a question that, when I met with the executive directors earlier last week, we talked about. And so what we want to do first is to try to get with the principals to identify what it is that they may see as the factor that would impact that. And then, once we aggregate that up to the, to the district level, then we'll determine what resources are needed to actually address that. But it's not something that I have at this moment. That's the work that's actually going on now.
Okay. Well, I'll look, look forward to those updates. Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. Ms. Mays?
Thank you, President Fowler. Just two questions of clarification for me. On the tiers of absenteeism, the, when we say or more of the time, of the time, is that a random time? Is that monthly, every six weeks?
So it's, it's a percentage of absences for the actual number of days that you have been in school. And so that number could fluctuate. You could move from tier three with these actual strategies being implemented to tier one. You could be at tier three today because you've missed 50% of the time. But if we implement a strategy and you miss no more time, yet there are more days available, then you move to a different tier.
Okay. But that's, that's calculated when?
So it's, it's actually calculated daily.
Oh, okay. That's my question.
These reports are going to be made available daily.
Okay. That was my question, what is of time. Thank you. And then my last question is, for the tier two or tier three students with HB45 that have to have additional tutoring time, is that tutoring time done during the school day?
Might have to let somebody academic.
Hi, Dr. Wertz. Hi, how are you? That's another good question. It depends. And the reason I say that is because it can happen during the school day. It cannot happen within the instructional block for which they are actually receiving the intervention. So here's the example. If I fail math, I can't have my intervention during math time. It has to be in addition to math time. So what happens is schools have carved out what we call intervention and enrichment time. In elementary, for example, there's 30 minutes of, of, of intervention time available in reading. There's 30 minutes available for intervention time in math. And then those students can get a portion of their, their interventions during that time. Other options are before, after school. It could be during your lunch hour. The, the requirement, the House Bill 4545 says those, you cannot remove a student from extracurricular activities. You can't remove them from specials or any of the things that normally students would have access to, to receive the tutoring. So we try our best to integrate it into the school day. It is 30 hours over the course of the year. So you, you keep, you, you know, you, most kids will get sessions like 30 minutes at a time. It just depends on the number of hours each student needs, and that's varied depending on the number of assessments they've actually failed.
Okay. And then who is doing the tutoring?
In most cases, it's the teacher or an AISD teacher. Very few students receive tutoring from an outside vendor. The great majority are internal. And our goal is to have pretty much all of our students receive internal tutoring with teachers.
Okay. Not, not necessarily their teacher, but a teacher.
So it can't always be your classroom teacher. It could be. The law does also limit how large the group size can be. So right now, it's a one to three ratio, which makes it very difficult if you have many kids in your class or many kids in a grade level that need it, which is why the, the statute was difficult to apply because there's basically none of bodies to do with the tutoring, which is why everyone was looking to vendors. If a parent gives permission to allow their student to engage in tutoring in a larger group size, I think it's even, I think we moved it maybe even to one to four, but that can go up to 15 or, or 10. Parents can allow that, but they have to give permission.
Thank you, Dr. Wertz.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Mays. Ms. McMura?
While we're on the topic of attendance, I just had one question, and this might be you, Dr. Hill. Sorry, guys. I was curious, and this might have come to light when you were meeting with the principals earlier. From elementary to junior high to high school, are there any commonalities with absenteeism? Like, are there any trends you notice, like, okay, it's mainly high school that has lower attendance? I know it's only October, but I'm curious what you're noticing this school year? If there's been any significant trends from, you know, elementary up?
So what we have noticed, and the, the report that was built by Dr. Lopez and her team, it's really dynamic. And what we have noticed is because we can even break it down by grade level, by sub-pop. And so what we have noticed is that at the lower grades in the elementary school, seventh grade, which is a transition year, and ninth grade, that's what we've noticed somewhat across the district. And when you look at the different tiers, there are certain percentages in tier three that are really high in, in those years, in those grade levels. So.
That's interesting. Okay. And can you, I'm sorry, I know that you mentioned there are transitionary years, like this first year of junior high, first year of high school. Is that something that we, we typically see, or is that unique to this school year?
It is typical.
Okay.
It is very typical in its transition years.
Okay. I have questions about our CA1, but we can ask those when we're ready.
Thank you, Ms. McMura. Dr. Hill, on the, you mentioned that there are barriers being, they're trying to remove barriers that might be causing students to not be in attendance. What, what are some of those barriers, do you think?
Well, it's, still, there's, and again, I haven't got the data back from the, from the campuses yet. But I would assess that it could be just transitioning back into school post-COVID could be one. I, I would really want to wait and hear exactly what they're saying out there as to what the barriers are.
Sure. And I hope that, that maybe there'll be some things that the district can do to help. If those principals will just reach out and, and let us know if there's anything, the district level, that we could help them on their individual campuses, we can do that.
That's the design. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, President Fowler. Thanks for that presentation. I don't have any questions on the absenteeism if we're ready to move on to the general questions, unless me and my colleagues have any more. All right, great. So I appreciate your comments, Dr. C, at the beginning about how this is just our, you know, very, our very first data point for the year, and there's going to be limited things that we can infer from it. But I'm curious from either Dr. Wertz or Dr. Lopez, you know, what narrative do you take away from what, what we've seen? You know, from what I see for most of these, we're already hitting our marks, which is fantastic news. So I know there's a couple where there might be areas of concern. Would either of you like to kind of address what, kind of summarize the, the big takeaway from what we're seeing with CA1?
For CA1, the guidance I would give is to utilize performance level classifications at the student level. Uh, for CA1, um, the guidance I would give is to utilize performance level classifications, um, at the student level. I, I'm hesitant to, I'm always hesitant with CA1 to make any snap adjustments. Or we, we do do projections and we run A to F as if CA1 was the star. Five weeks in, it's, it's just not as reliable. Um, and it doesn't have as strong of a correlation as CA2 or Benchmark has had in the past. So typically, see where the student is falling as far as the performance level category. And then work with the student based on this assessment, as if it was a formative assessment. Try not to move towards summative at this point.
So the advice, well, and for us, you know, we're really looking at the summative level as trustees. So it's, it's really, so what you're saying, it's really good data for our teachers. So, um, and so it, it would be hard to give us a red, green, yellow scale on these individual tests on, on if we think we're on the right trajectory for meeting our, our end of year STAR goals.
It, it will be, um, it, even moving into CA2 and, and, and three and Benchmark this year, we're going to run into the same issue that, that TEA is running into. Where we're trying to set performance levels on a new test design. So that's a, that's a pretty, that's a pretty scary violation of test equating. We, we said, but, but some information is better than none. Um, and so we want to give as much information as we can, but we don't want to hang our hats on that. So kind of how like growth, we, we're going to calculate growth the old way. We don't know what the growth formula is for 22, 23. Generally, if a child is showing as a zero or a point five, it's not, it's not saying that's exactly what's going to happen on their star. Cause we're not even going to have zero, half or one. Well, we may, no, we may. But, um, we, we're, we're, look at them in that growth category and then work with the child on certain teaks that you've noticed, maybe that they are not, you know, they're struggling in. But certainly don't want to make any real strong correlation or kind of prediction towards how they're going to perform on STAR. Definitely not with CA1. Like I said, we run it, we do it because we know the rules, but five weeks in, there's a lot that, that kind of is occurring in the classroom additionally. That also makes me a little, a little nervous about, about that.
And, um, Dr. Lopez, refresh my memory. So CA1 is just on the specific teaks that the teacher at that grade level or that subject should have covered by the administration date of that
Yes, sir.
CA. And, but as I think you pointed out in, in your answers to my questions earlier, and thank you, by the way. At the beginning of the year, teachers are trying to get kids refreshed from last year's learning that cuts into their time to start, uh, teaching the new teaks that are going to be covered on this. And so it's a little less re- reliable, like you said, than CA2 or CA3. Now, speaking of CA2, do, i- is that a longer test and does it cover more teaks?
Yes, sir. Both yes and yes.
Yes and yes. But still only what should have been taught up to that point?
Yes.
Okay.
And again, I mean, a teacher may have gotten to all of that, all that content. They may not have. We still equate under the assumption that the content was covered.
Okay. Okay, that, that's good to know.
Mr. Will Banks, I think the other, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the other thing that's noticeable about CA1 is uh, there doesn't seem to be a drastic, um, slide backwards or something like that. And I think that's, that's important that we noted as well. There's some stability, right? And when you look at campuses, when there is less stability, and it's not drastic because that's, you know, we didn't see that. Those are things that we highlight a little bit with our EDs and, and our staff is to say, okay, why is it a little less stable in some grade levels or, but again, it's, everything Natalie said about it's, it's really early. And you have to be careful with reading too much into it, but, uh, there's some stability in, in those scores that, that is a good sign, I think, for us.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that was actually one of the things I was going to point out and, um, that's something I was hoping we could infer from the data. Because it is a little bit difficult. We're, we're kind of frustrated as trustees because we're anxious to try to predict how we are and if we need to make course adjustments. But as you said, it's probably unwise to make, uh, course adjustments at this point. Uh, but the key thing I want my colleagues to understand on, as we fill in these charts, each one should get, i- it's not like, uh, the screener data where, you know, you start off, off low and you're looking for growth all the way up to your goal at the end of the year. We should be within the margin of error of hitting our target each time. Because we're, if the CA or the Benchmark is correlated to the STAR, we should be expecting them to get close to what our goal is. Correct?
With, with all assumptions met, yes. And in a perfect world, yes, we would.
With that caveat.
Well, and I think another thing to say is they become more, and we've had this discussion before, they become more predictive. As the, 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 the longer the test, the more content discovered becomes much more predictive.
Able to implement those intervention strategies and have affect, get kids caught up, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Yeah.
But TEA has even put on their, um, STAR interim assessment site to exercise caution in interpreting the results because these are equated based on prior year STAR design standards and not to the new standards. So I, I mean, I was actually, I was glad to see that because I'm, I'm like, that, that's very good information for people to have. And so I want to echo that, that we do, um, you know, as similar process. And so we would want to encourage teachers, educators, parents, just exercise caution with this. This year particularly, as we're going to a new assessment design.
And I'll, I'll add, because I think it's an important point, that the earliest, a- according to a meeting we had with the commissioner a couple of days ago, the earliest will have the draft rules will be Thanksgiving. And that means the draft rules of how all this applies to accountability. Won't be the final rules.
No.
It'd be the first draft of those rules.
Yeah.
The other thing that he mentioned was that they, they will have a preview of what the scores would look like if these rules were implemented. And I think that's another, um, challenge for school districts and the state. Because applying new rules to last year's data is going to paint a certain picture in the spring. And there's going to have to be, I think from the state, uh, strong communication about what all that means. Cause it's not as easy as just saying, oh, we're applying the new rules and here's what your scores would have been last year. And not confuse people about the scores from last year. Big challenges, I just want to point that out, that are coming with this whole change, even as we look at this data.
Yeah, that's, uh, good to point out, Dr. C. You know, the only thing that does give, give me kind of pause in the data that you presented was the third grade reading. And you said you were going to try to
So, um, on the third grade reading assessment this year, um, there's a, a standard process that we use to equate, this year's performance to prior year performance. Um, and on, on some assessments, every once in a while, you have to make, um, there are A to F accountability progress measure rules that interfere with the standard equating process. So that happened on our third grade reading. So we actually had to push up the performance level category. And that made the test harder. That made the classifications, um, not as reliable as they should be. But because of the interference with the A to F progress measure calculation, we can't leave the categories where they fall, according to the procedure. And so on that one, we did, we did have to make the approaches level more difficult, which then made less students able to obtain that level. So I know it, it does look alarming. However, that was because of our, the psychometricians and, and what we had to do to make that adjustment.
So it's your fault, you're saying?
Yes. Yes. Yeah.
Okay. All right. So one last question for you, Natalie. On the CCMR, I gotta put my readers on, sorry. So, um, the good news is we scored a 63 last year and that's going to be used in this year's accountability rating. But you said something about this year's score. We know, so, um, I'm a little confused on what we're measuring at this early stage because aren't, aren't a lot of the measures that go into, uh, CCMR predicated on kids actually finishing a course and taking AP exams? So what, what makes up this 48% and how predictive is it of our ending goal of 67? Or is that something we probably will see a lot of progress towards making up that gap?
You'll see it towards the end of the year, making up that gap. Because it, it begins to paint a picture, but it's still very early for, for a lot of kids in, in their senior year and certification year, et cetera. Gathering the dual credit, um, and things like that. It's, it's still kind of early. But what I think it does show is that there's progress. And this one's a tricky one for a lot of reasons, but we'll just stick to the simple reasons. Because they're still amassing those, right? Uh, it's also tricky because the rules are changing.
Changing, yeah.
It's also tricky because what this means in the new accountability system is still an unknown. So even though we have the 60, what was it, Natalie, 60?
63%.
63%, it may be applied differently.
Oh, the 63% from last year might be applied differently.
In 23 accountability.
Oh, okay.
Because these are the new rules. All these, all the things that are changing with the accountability system include CCMR. Early prediction is that, um, it will have an effect on the district, more so than the high schools. Right now, our accountability system is tied pretty strongly district-wide to CCMR that happens in the district. They're thinking of disconnecting that. Again, we won't know until the draft rules in November and then until they're actually adopted, which will be way down the line in our game.
No. Um, thank you for the presentation. And I know the challenges that exist with just this early CA. I wish we could infer more, but we can't. So I'll leave it at that for you. I do have a couple of, just maybe one or two small questions for Dr. Wertz.
Thank you.
So, Dr. Wertz, I appreciate you. You covered all the core strategy, strategy areas and focus areas. But I just want to clarify the, these strategies and this plan for, um, say our reading instruction in, uh, at the various levels in our math instruction. Those are our core, that's our core plan we've been implementing from last year all year. You're not recommending a course change at this time?
No, we, we just implementing them this year. So we
Oh, you're right, this year.
Yeah, we're not, no, it's, we're, we just initiated it. We're five weeks in. And so, no, we want to, we want to hold steady. Teachers were trained, um, coaches were trained and they're, they're just initiating the implementation process. We're just like, since school started. So, um, no, not yet.
No. Um, what, so, no, and because CA1, you know, and the challenges that we talked about, was there anything that you did in terms of looking at root cause in areas that did give you alarm, that caused you to?
No. We don't conduct a root cause analysis for a CA1 for the reasons that she talked about. Um, we really encourage, there, it's really designed for teachers to really use as a formative assessment at their own, in their own classroom with their individual kids, uh, because it is such a small amount. One thing is we tell teachers in advance which standards are eligible for the assessment. But you can't assess all the standards that they're supposed to be learning in the, in that six weeks period in, on a CA because of the length of the test. Even STAR has, they had to pick and choose which standards they're actually going to assess. So it's really designed to give teachers an opportunity to, in their PLCs or in their, in their classrooms, really go through the data and, and make some decisions about whether they're on course, whether they need to make some adjustments for Steven. He needs to be in a small group, that kind of thing. But in terms like a system-wide, uh, analysis where we're looking for root cause, it's really, really early for something like that.
Okay. Yeah, no, I, I know, I agree. So, uh, and based on where we did end up on most measures, you know, the signal is if we can infer a signal, it's stay the course. So, um, but I'll ask one more question, even though it's not warranted because we're staying the course. What are we doing in terms of process measures to measure the fidelity of these strategies and how well they're being implemented? Do we have any good measures on how well, uh, all of our teachers have been trained in these areas and, and the work that's going on in each campus? And the, the correlation that we are seeing with student outcomes and how well they're being implemented with fidelity?
So our task, once we implement the strategy, is to monitor for implementation like you're, like you're suggesting. In terms of training, we, we know who's been trained, which campuses have been trained and the, 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 um, content of their actual training. We also know the track, we, we track specific visits around coaching. So we can see how many coaching cycles have occurred, who's earning growth indicators, what, what, what coaching sessions are being canceled and the reasons why that's occurring so that we can intervene and think about that as well. In terms of the implementation of the strategies or, um, specifically in the comprehensive literacy and math plan, this is an initial implementation year. And so what we are doing is principals will be going to the classroom, um, according to a specific fidelity, uh, check schedule. And they will go to see what level of, of, of implementation they're noticing in the classroom around guided reading. Do they see some of, some level of implementation, no implementation, or full implementation? And then we can amass that data, try to get a sense about where additional supports are needed at campuses, which coaches might need additional help or support, what kinds of, A will inform our training and our reaction to that data. So, uh, when we get towards the end of the story, then we can start to see, um, what impact those strategies are actually having. But then to your question about monitoring for implementation, principals will do that. Another component of that is, um, when you start implementing a new strategy and there's learning happening even among adults, uh, you have to calibrate that so that if you and I were to go into a classroom together and look at a, a practice, we would actually be seeing the same thing. Sometimes we go into it and we look at, uh, you might watch instruction in the classroom, but we actually pick up on different things because our training or our background like cues us in different ways. And so as part of that process, what we'll be doing each quarter is the curriculum department will be walking alongside, um, members of offices, school leadership and principals so that we can go into rooms with each other, look at the exact same thing and then come into this dialogue while we talk with, so we can calibrate. That way, when any of us go into the classroom and we mark whether we're seeing none, partial, or full fidelity of implementation, we would actually all give the same answer because we can see it and we all equate it in the same way. Yeah.
That's awesome. Yeah. All right, good. All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Ms. McMorro?
Thank you, Dr. Wertz and Dr. Lopez for the presentation. Um, can we go back to the slide with, uh, third grade reading CA1 data? I always make you go back to like the first two slides. I'm sorry.
I don't mind at all.
Okay. So I know you touched on, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm not there yet. Hold on. I gotta keep going.
It really is one of the first ones.
This is third grade reading.
Yes. Can we look at the breakdown?
Yes.
There we go. So, Dr. Lopez, I know you touched on this. To adjust, you know, performance measure, that changes, um, the percentage of students who met approaches. Any idea, and you might, you guys not, might not know right now, but any idea what the passing percentage actually was once that adjustment was made?
Can you speak to that? We talked about that.
Sure. And, and the reason why, and it's okay if it's not right on the spot. But the reason why I ask is because, um, I'm wondering how that adjustment, you know, fluctuate. Cause when I look at eighth grade reading, that's a 27%, I mean, that's a 27-point difference. We had over 80% of the students, um, meet the standard in eighth grade reading, but then when I look at third grade reading, it's 53%. And, um, you know, my son's in third grade. I, I know And, you know, my son's in third grade, I know this cohort well, COVID hit when he was a kindergartner, and I was very curious to learn how these students would do on their very first curriculum assessment. They're also the cohort who gets the pleasure of taking the first state assessment digitally, so it's a lot at once. So that's the main reason why I'm curious about that. And again, if you guys don't have that number tonight, that's fine. Other than that performance measure being adjusted, is there any, are there any other noticeings that you guys have that, you know, caused that fifty-three percent to be our number for CA1?
No specific.
Okay, okay. Okay, and I want to thank you guys too for answering the questions I asked prior to the board meeting. I do also appreciate Dr. Cavasos's comments about how this is our preliminary assessment, and it helps our teachers use data to drive their instruction. And I really, really, it's so important for that data to be true data, so that they can, you know, they can have, you know, curriculum assessment, these are the TECs I've taught, this is what I know is coming up, and this is how I need to adjust moving forward in whole group and small group. So I've asked some of these questions prior, but I thought it might provide a good rationale for anyone watching. What is the current process we have for our staff to vet district-created assessments like this CA to help ensure that they are error-free and easy as possible for our students to navigate?
Okay, so it's a good question, and I'm sure one that many people have. The first thing I would like to say is, humans are writing these assessments. And anytime you introduce a human being into the process, there's always an opportunity for error to happen. So with that in mind, we try to make sure that they're error-free. Our standard in curriculum instruction is totally error-free, but sometimes that, it slips through. So basically what our process is, we have a style guide that everybody who participates in writing the assessments, it articulates exactly the format in which the test needs to be written. And then when the initial standard is identified by a specialist, then the specialist drafts the initial question. Sometimes that question is drafted by the specialist, sometimes it's pulled from a resource, because we purchased test bank questions and things like that. I don't know what that was. So they draft the question. Then after that happens, that question then goes to a peer reviewer who reviews the question to look for errors and to make sure that it's measuring the standard as the standard articulates. And then it goes back to the initial author, and that author specialist then revises it based on that feedback. And then when that finishes, it goes to the coordinator, who then reviews it, and then it goes back to the author again to finalize it, and at which point then it goes forward to the coordinator to give to the director. So there are, in essence, four layers of writing, review, writing, review, writing, review. And all of these are articulated on a calendar. So it's not like if Dr. Brown was writing the assessment, she would just give it to me when she's ready. There's a specific timeline about when she writes it, when she has to give it for peer review, when the peer reviews have to be completed, when it goes to the coordinator, and it follows that process. And so all of that's outlined in the work. And again, the peer review looks to make sure that it's not only aligned to the standard, but that it's written and formatted according to the style guide.
Yes, and all the while, we're having to build the plane as we fly it by building assessments that align as much as possible with what the new STAR item types will be, so, and I know that's being done.
So that's another really important point. There are fourteen different types of test items, and there are a large handful that are going to be integrated at some point into the assessments. And TEA has provided us with a blueprint that's told us specifically which types of questions will be found in which assessments and which grade levels. And so what our team has had to do is to integrate those, they're called TEIs, or Technology Enhanced Items, into the assessment, because this year, all students, with the exception of very, very few, will be taking it or take it online. And so they have to have practice in doing these types of items, because they may actually know the content, but they won't know how to respond to the question, so it'll look like they don't know the content, but when they actually do, they just can't answer the question. So our goal this year is to make sure that we give teachers and students as much access to those types of questions and that, in that platform as much as possible. So it's integrated into all of our assessments that are at the district level. We are also rewriting all of our unit assessments that are inside our curriculum to give teachers access to something that's ready-made. They also have access to resources that TEA has provided, which are practice assessments where they're embedded in the Cambium system, which is exactly the way STAR is done. We've purchased different test banks that will allow teachers to generate questions, and we provided them with resources on what that looks like. So TEA calls it one thing, each test item is given a specific name, but Canvas calls it something different. H5P calls it something different in Polaris, we actually lined Polaris to TEA. So what we've done is, the team has created a grid that's actually showed teachers, how do you build an assessment in Canvas that you give to your kids? If you want to use this type of test item, because it's aligned to the way it's going to be tested on STAR, what do you actually call, what does Canvas call it? So you're picking the right one, and then we show them how to build those. And then last but not least, we have a Canvas course that we've created and given to teachers for the constructed responses, which gives them guidance on how do you grade a constructed response, what are some exemplars? Because all of these things are new, especially constructive responses for students that are not sitting in English one or two, or the former seventh and fourth grade writers. So there's kind of, there's a lot happening.
And there's a lot of hard work, a lot of hard work going into all of this. And so throughout that very structured process, are we giving our CNI staff the opportunity to work these assessments inside Polaris so they can see it in student view? Because if I take this test as a third grader on Polaris, you know, instead of a paper copy, I might notice, oh, okay, the paragraphs aren't numbered. Or, hey, when I built this test, this fill-in-the-blank had a blank instead of a random character. So do they have that opportunity?
They do do that, and we've actually been working with a vendor. The thing that we have to keep in mind is, Edugent's, which we call Polaris here in Arlington, had to rewrite all the programming to integrate the, several of these new test items into their system. And we've been working really closely with them. And so when they actually, when a specialist inputs what the exam is going to look like on Polaris, they are able to see what it looks like for kids, so they can actually verify that. We also have a place where teachers, we can receive feedback live about when there's an error. Sometimes a user will notice an error that was somehow not caught. When that error is pulled into the system, like from Natalie's group, they can see what that error is. They can decide whether that impacts the scoring of the assessment and also future adjustments to the assessment, so that it can be corrected. Because as I mentioned on the front side, while there is human error sometimes, because we're human beings, our standard is zero.
Thank you. And that's good to hear. So back to using data to drive instruction. They've got this, and I know that you mentioned to me that our teachers have the testing timeline, and they're able to see CA1. Here will be the standards assessed, CA2, here's the standards assessed. Do you, I understand that each grade level and content area that's tested gets their own unique assessment timeline. Are they all completed for this year, so that the teachers have the ability to backwards design?
Yes, they're all accessible on Curriculum Central.
All right, and my final question, how are we supporting our teachers in scoring those new constructed responses? I know that TEA is holding their cards with, you know, all of the details about the rubric, but with the information we have, how are we supporting our teachers so that they can do this, not just when scoring assessments, but in their instruction?
So that part of it, so it's about training and practice. So when they take the assessment, obviously, that's going to be something that's different for teachers, is they're going to have to score an element that normally we would automate, but you just can't, because they're short-constructed. So that's part of the reason why we created this Canvas course, where teachers had access to materials to support them anytime, outside of even just a training, where they could see exemplars, they could see how do you actually score a constructed response in your classroom? Because most of the time, outside of the assessments that we generate that are available on the unit assessments, teachers often create their own assessments for kids. And so that guidance is there to help them think about, how do I do this, even if I create that in my own classroom? Anytime we become aware, for example, through a PLC, that this is a topic of some, that a school would want to know more about, we would dispatch staff out to their PLCs to provide additional help and support to teachers. But the goal is to ready them as much as possible.
Thank you so much. And again, I ask all these questions, because if it's something that takes away from instructional time, and we all know assessment is necessary, it's not our favorite, but it takes away from instructional time. We just want to ensure that it's as quality as possible, and we want to reduce the anxiety that it causes our students and our teachers. And so that's kind of where my questions are stemming from. And, you know, we're paying for this platform, and, you know, we don't have the state's platform to build our assessments in. But I'm glad to hear that what we have has the ability to put in fourteen of those new item types, because we never want a student to be unsuccessful in a test, because they have difficulty navigating, or they get stuck in, you know, the format of it all. And that's again why I'm really hyper-focused on these third graders. So thank you so much for answering my questions.
Thank you, Ms. McMurro. Mr. Hibbs?
Thank you, President Fowler, thank you, thank you. I've listened very intently, and I want to tell you, I appreciate each one of you for the way that you've been able to come up, explain what you have tonight. The trustees have asked many questions, all of my questions have been basically crossed out. But I do want to bring up something that Ms. McMurro said. She says, who do our teachers go to when they find errors and inconsistencies or something? This is a really important point, I think, in what I gathered. You go back to your testing coordinator, you go back to your administration on campus, or you reach out to the powers that be within the group. Yourselves, Dr. Lopez, Dr. Wertz, Dr. Brown. Dr. Lopez responded to an email that a trustee received, and it was actually a screenshot. And what really hit home for me was, by the way, this screenshot, if it was a screenshot of the STAR, could cause a teacher to lose their certification. It's key for our teachers to understand that, whereas they want to reach out to us, or maybe reach out to one that they feel like, okay, this is an advocate, one of our own, that's how most of us, we get up here, that it's important that they go back through the, you know, the basis of reaching out to those at the campus level and then to the district administration level, so they don't do something that they think, hey, I want to make sure that this gets addressed, and think that it would be best through us, when it could actually lead to a very compromising situation if just by doing something that they think is very simple of taking a picture, that it could be something that could come back and, you know, lose your teaching certification. So I do want to remind our teachers, always go back to that chain of command first. That's always going, regardless on whatever level it may be. We looked at something in fraud, waste, and abuse on an audit, and it was really something that, first thing that came to my mind is, why didn't whoever the person here that had an issue with this go to the campus administration? And that could have been anybody, it could have been a parent, it could have been a teacher, anything else, but it was, you take that jump to the highest level sometimes, and it can literally not be the appropriate way to do it. So I want to leave it at that, that it's just something that we, I appreciate you asking that question, I think that it gave clarification. But just a reminder that always go back to the campus, you know, your direct campus administration, or to the district to answer those questions many times first, you know, and then if you still haven't gotten the answer, you know, obviously, we would be available to see if we can assist with the situation after that. But thank you, I apologize.
No, thank you, Mr. Hibbs, and I think that was an important point to make. Sometimes I think teachers or parents get our roles confused, and they don't understand that we are governance and not management. And, yeah, we want to know the issues, and we want to hear from people, but we also want people to understand that there are certain roles that the trustees play, and sometimes we can't get out of our lane. And so, as Mr. Hibbs was saying, I think it is important for teachers and parents to understand that chain of command, that it's always best to start at the campus level and work your way, and see if you can't get things resolved at the campus level before you move up. So thank you, Mr. Hibbs, I think that was important. Mr. Will Banks, the hour is getting late.
I have one question.
Thank you.
It was spurred by something Dr. Wertz said in response to Ms. McMurro. And as someone who's going through an implementation of a QA test plan right now for a client, I was listening to your response to the complexities now. Back when things were on paper, we had one kind of degree of complexity, but I think I heard you mention three or four other degrees, or maybe even five other degrees of complexity, times how many different test question types?
There are fourteen total types, I think there are eleven of the new TEIs.
So infinitely more complex than before. And as someone who works with software systems, you know, doing the beta testing is very imperative. What was done on the front end over the summer to beta test all of the fourteen different types, times all the different question types, times all the different technology that we use, and the different grade levels, because the requirements are infinitely bigger than just, than what we had before. Were we prepared for that level of testing?
We started working with a vendor in the spring on this, and they worked all summer long to try to make sure they were ready. They work with, Edugent works with districts all across the state, and it's a challenge everyone has, because it's happening so suddenly. Even TEA is trying to keep up with this, and they're the ones that are actually initiating it, so.
Yes, thank you, TEA.
Yeah, so we've been working with them to integrate it, write the test, see how they're functioning, but it's a challenge. It really, really is a challenge. I'm really proud of the team, how much work they're doing. I, you know, you put your deposits in your withdrawals, I think I've definitely done some withdrawals, withdrawals over the last little while, just because it's a huge, to the point, I think that you were saying, Ms. McMurro, the volume of impact, of change, that simply changing the way a test is designed, that what that.
And then adding fourteen new question types?
Well, and the ripple on the way the curriculum is written, and the support you provide teachers, it's just, it's a lot of work. And so I'm really proud to say, you know, I went to Region 11, and I sat, I go there monthly to, you know, hear all the updates. And I feel really proud about where Arlington is, to be honest with you. There are several of my colleagues that are literally building it now as they go, and are just trying to figure it out. And it's, and some people, some districts who don't necessarily have the resources that we have, rely solely on the things that TEA publishes, which, to be really frank, is very minimal. So I feel like we're in a really good spot. I think this time next year, we'll be in an even better spot, it's just going to take some time.
So are we, you know, I just want to make sure that before we get to CA2, because you heard me earlier, I'm chomping at the bit to make inferences from our data and see where we are, and it's critical that it's as accurate reflection of where students are as possible. Are we building more time to get those kinks worked out on the technology side, as well as the quality of the questions, to make sure there's no errors on both?
Yeah, I'm not concerned about the quality of the assessment and doing a measurement, in terms of statistically how we can predict. I'm going to leave that to.
Well, no, I meant, what are we doing to test to make sure we don't have any errors in the technology side going forward, or with the type of questions that?
That is conducted through that review process that I talk about, where we actually have two or three people looking at it, laying on it like four different times.
All right, I'm getting, I'm getting the yank, so I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Now, thank you so much, Dr. Wertz, Dr. Lopez, thank you so much for bringing us this information. Thank you for addressing our questions, some of us who had more than others. So thank you so much for that, and we will move on now.
All right.
Thank you. We now come to our open forum for non-agenda items, Ms. Ben. Ms. Benjamin, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding non-agenda items?
No, ma'am, we do not.
Thank you, Ms. Benjamin. It's now time for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Fowler. And so tonight, just a couple of points of interest. I want to start by a big thank you to the Texas Rangers Foundation. You'll see some pictures there. The Arlington ISD Education Foundation was funded, one of five $100,000 legacy grants from the Texas Rangers to support our students. And of course, it's going to go to pre-K, our pre-K learners. They'll have new exercise equipment to help, help with health and wellness. They'll have everything from T-ball to hula hoops, to bouncers, if you want to come over and join the pre-K. They'll have a lot of equipment. We're fortunate to have Great Education Foundation and Texas Rangers as partners. I want to thank them, that's one of their big legacy grants. Wednesday morning, we hosted our, the first super-convening of all Tarrant County superintendents here in Arlington. We hosted that at their Center for Visual and Performing Arts. Meeting was a great opportunities for all the superintendents in Tarrant County to come together on our important topics that we have in our county. We're the third-largest county in Texas in terms of the number of public school students that we serve. And it's about 7% of the state's students attend school in our county, as an example. And so the key focus of the meeting was on strategic priorities. Early math, literacy, these will sound familiar, economic opportunity pathways. The CBPA was, you saw those pictures, was a great venue for us to host this meeting. This is funded by the Morris Foundation for Tarrant County Superintendent. So it may sound familiar, it's, it's very similar to Dallas Commit, as an example. Tarrant County is now becoming, having their own group to, to drive change in education. October marks the start of National Principals Month, and in Arlington ISD, we are certainly blessed to have principals that, that do an outstanding job. They'll be spotlighted in our website throughout the month. We started Monday with a look at one of our newest principals, Pierce STEM Academy Principal, Sarah Brooks. She's a great representative for our principals in Arlington ISD. She spent 12 years in the district before being named Piercey Principal. So congratulations and thank you to all our, our principals. I want to thank the North Texas Honda Dealers for making a stop at Bebenzy. Look how happy those kids are. And of course, they brought their Odyssey, yeah, Honda Odyssey there. And so it was part of their Random Act of Helpfulness campaign. Bebenzy has more than 700 students, and the North Texas Honda Dealers made sure every student got a new book. Students lined up to see what they had to choose from. They were both books in English and in Spanish, and the topics ranged to all kinds of interests. I'd like to thank retired teacher Catherine Hoffman for nominating, because they have to, somebody has to nominate the school. She nominated Bebenzy, and the librarian there, Margaret Resendez, who was the recipient, obviously, of this, with her kids. Thank you for all their hard work. Students and staff at Bergen Elementary were able to honor namesake Bob Bergen with a balloon release. Some of the balloons contain some of Bob Bergen's favorite messages. We're very happy to have namesake Tilly Bergen as one of the guests there, and some of the other family members of the Bergen family, that were able to be on hand for the release. We also thank, in a special way, Costco for providing the pizza and donating backpacks for all our students. So thank you for that honor, thank you Bergen Elementary for taking that leadership role and honoring namesake Bob Bergen. Finally, congratulations to Martin Student Vivian Wen for making national news. Vivian, who was, has been featured on our website before, was named one of six teens who make the world a better place. So one of six nationally. She started an apparel business when she was 14 and donated the proceeds to charity. Since then, she started a mentorship program. She's a panelist member, she's been to international conferences that promote women's empowerment. I had an opportunity to visit with Vivian this week, and there is no doubt that she's going to continue to change the world like she is now. Congratulations to her, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Do I have any school board reports?
Have we talked about Dean Cory Night, Dr. See?
Ms. Mays?
I was just going to say, and that's what it's all about. That's what it's all about.
Anyone else? All right. I would like to let everyone know that.
Sir.
Real briefly, I just wanted to give a shout out to all of our high school bands. They all performed at Dean Cory Night last week. Every band blew us all away. I, I took my son because I'm hoping one day he wants to play a band instrument, and he, he also was wowed. Each of the bands had beautiful performances. The drum majors blew me away, all the volunteers and the band booster clubs and the directors, they pour so much heart and soul and commitment into their craft. And, you know, the new uniforms weren't too shabby either. It was just an awesome night for each of our bands to shine, and I enjoyed every minute. So I just want to thank all of, all of our fine arts educators out there, because our AISD bands have it going on, and Dean Cory Night was a joy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McMurro. Dr. Raich?
Thank you, President Fowler. I just wanted to say thank you to my colleagues. We were down in San Antonio for the Tacitazby Convention, learning as well as presenting and sharing pearls of our experiences in Arlington ISD with trustees from around the state. So just thank you for your involvement and engagement, and that was a, a good, a good meeting. Also wanted to say, as has already been mentioned, our Arlington ISD Education Foundation, they had an event this past weekend, which was very well-received, raised a lot of money, which will go directly towards our students and our teachers in the classroom. So very appreciative of that. And then earlier this week, we had another edition of our trustee talks. It was regarding parent and community engagement, and some very good conversations were had at that meeting as well. So I encourage the public to look out for those coming up in the future. That's it.
Thank you, Dr. Raich. Good points made. On Tuesday, October 11th, there's going to be a special program at Dunn Elementary, and it's called Hey Dude, Nice Shoes. And it is an anti-bullying, pro-kindness program. And I happen to know the young lady who is presenting it, and I cannot believe that she is all grown up and doing this. I actually taught her English in sixth grade, and we have kept in touch, and she goes all over the nation presenting this Hey Dude, Nice Shoes, Anti-Bullying, Pro-Kindness program. And I am so thrilled that she's going to be here in Arlington at Dunn Elementary on Tuesday. The students will see her program during the day, and she's agreed to do a special program in the evening to invite parents and community members to come watch her program. And I promise you, you will not be disappointed. It's going to be phenomenal. Hey Dude, Nice Shoes. I encourage you to be at Dunn on Tuesday. Ms. Secretary, do we have anything to report?
No, President Fowler, we do not.
All right. It is 9:31, and we are adjourned.